All right, well, I'll kind of get us started. Welcome, everybody. We've reached 4:30, which is our post-it time. Not that we really have a post-it time for a meeting like this, but since we're a forum, we didn't. So, welcome, everybody. Tonight, we're going to have a great interaction with the police department. We're going to start with dinner. Mayor's office ordered dinner for us, and that's been set up in the back, so we can go ahead and do that. Chief Hardell has some quick welcome remarks to get us started with our evening, and I think we may have at least one other council member coming yet, but we'll catch him up on the way. I think Pat's on his way, but I figure with the weather being like this, he might be biking. So, we will draw him into the fold when he shows up. So, other than that, we've got a couple that -- one got called out of town. We've got one that's sick today, and we didn't want to be sick too, so we decided that it's okay for her to not attend. So, thank you for coming and taking an evening out to spend the evening with us, and we'll turn it over to Chief Hardell.
Yeah. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for being here. This is really a fresh -- a breath of fresh air, because prior to this council, the previous four years took a lot out of us. It really did. And so, to have the council want to know more about our operations and the services that we provide our community, and how we can work together to provide those services, is really key. So, thank you so much. It means a lot to us that you're here. I think everyone knows everyone, but just in case you don't know, all of my staff members, I think we'll just do a real quick introduction. Of course, I'm Jeff Hardell, and then in the back, Matt?
Matt Barnes, patrol captain.
Ben Graham, administrative lieutenant.
Nate Stetser, community resource officer.
Tom Beaton, lieutenant of the community resource unit.
And Ben Luthen will be here soon. All of us are going to take various times to present. We've got a presentation that we're going to provide for you. And then, just so that they know who you are, you might have just gone around the room and introducing yourselves. Start with Lisa.
We'll start with me. Lisa Rasmussen, city council president.
Karen Kalbach, District Eight.
Dave Nutting, District Three, and this is my wife, Joy.
Dennis Smith, District Eleven.
Tom Neal, District Four.
Gary Gilson, District Five, Sector Eight.
Bob Milkie, mayor.
Becky McElhenney, District Six.
Okay, we've got a few other people here. Daily Herald reporter.
Yep.
What, your first name?
Ariel.
Ariel, that's right. And then Curtis. Curtis?
And Chris, public access?
Okay. One of the things, just before I came in here, one of the things that I did was, we have a PEG meeting, which PEG is Police Executive Group. It's the larger agencies in the state of Wisconsin. We have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, and one thing I asked them to discuss on the agenda was the pros and cons of releasing body worn footage or squad footage, releasing that footage to the community after a shooting sooner than once the investigation is completed. I understand that you can't manipulate or taint the interviews during the investigation, but once the interviews are done, I feel, personally feel, the video should be released to the community so that they can see what's going on. And that's not being done. It's not being done here in Wisconsin. It's not being done across the nation. They're waiting until the whole investigation is complete. And, you know, I think that we need to respond to the community's needs, and the community wants to see that video. And if that's going to help calm the waters, and if that's going to help gain trust, then we need to look at that. So, Dave, go ahead.
Well, Chief, are you bound by a certain regulation that requires it to be opened at a certain time?
Well, yes and no. I mean, the district attorney's office is requesting us not to release any of that information. We don't necessarily agree with that philosophy, but when we have, you know, our shootings that we have had, the two of them in the last year, we've had DCI Department criminal investigations investigate that, and it's their policy. And they investigate shootings all over the state. They're kind of the leading agencies, agency for this. And their policy is, we don't release the video until investigation is -- actually, they don't release the video until the district attorney's office makes a decision on whether it was a good shoot or bad shoot. So, that's the struggle that we're in right now. We feel it's important to gain community's trust. We want them to see the video. We're being bound by other agencies that says, "No, you can't do that." So, I want to have a discussion at this meeting that I'm telling you about with PEG. At this meeting, DCI director will be there, and so he can be part of this discussion on what are the pros and cons about this, you know, why can't we do it?
If the video, let's say, can't be released until a certain time, are you still able to characterize the video verbally?
Yeah, absolutely, and we have done that. And the police chief in Charlotte, North Carolina, I don't know if you saw his press conference, but he basically went over that scenario and told them how it unfolded, told them that the individual had a gun. The gun was pointed in the direction of an officer, that refused officer's commands, et cetera. But then, the other side of that, the family and some of the other organizations are saying, "No, he didn't have a gun. He had a book. All he had was a book in his hand." Well, there's a big difference between a book and a weapon.
Maybe a gun that looked like a book.
Yeah, I mean, that's a big discrepancy, right? And so, what I'm saying is, the chief, or myself, or the captains, will do that, but there's a faction out there that they don't trust us. They don't believe in what we're saying. And so, therefore, the only thing they will believe is the video.
I have one quick comment. And I'm glad that you put the video up, because that is really a powerful piece, and I think that it's going to be great for the Facebook page, you know, on your website. And I'm glad that you're setting your introductory remarks, that it really takes a partnership between all of us at all levels of local government and within municipal services, because it is certainly no exaggeration when the chief says that the last four years of things that have happened within the city have taken a lot out of the public safety of all departments, but it's taken a lot out of the police, because they really are interacting with our residents the most, and they're getting the most feedback from the public on a daily basis. And one of the things that I pledged in my very first meeting with the mayor as council president in this term was that we can never let internal conflict between different levels of our governments put our frontline staff in the position that they were in for the last four years. We can never let that happen again. We don't have to agree with one another. We don't have to love one another, but we have to get along well enough to do the job that we were sent here to do, so they can do the job that they have to do. And that was what the very first thing that the mayor and I agreed on, was that the internal conflict that was taking place between prior councils and the prior administration was so intense and so taxing for the public and for everyone caught in the crossfire, that we pledged that we will not put our staff in that position again. And I think we're making a valid effort not to, and I think that the interactions that we have with the fire department, the interaction we're having here tonight, we're going to do one with DPW also once the snow falls, because we need snow to plow, and we're going to try and do one at the water department, because they've invited us as well. The more we can understand the municipal services we provide, and the more we can interact with the workforce that provides it, the better decision-makers we become. And that's the entire motivation behind our sessions that we're hosting in this first six months of our term, so that we can get out in field and really interact differently with our workforce than we ever have before. So, that's why we're here tonight.
And also realize where our workforce is coming from as well, because they're kind of what we said, stated. They're on the front line. It's easy for us as policymakers, "Oh, if we don't see what they're doing, well, let's just do it another way, or let's not fund it," or whatever the case may be. Now, by seeing it, it's going to give us a little bit more of an education into seeing what folks are going through. We talked -- Pat, just a minute. We talk about, here at the PD, we talk about making deposits in the bank of trust on a regular basis. You could call any of our officers, and they'll know exactly what you're talking about if you throw that out there. We work hard to gain trust. What Lisa was talking about was when the city is, you know, is so dysfunctional that the community doesn't trust the city, or doesn't trust city government, we're part of that. And every time that we go out and try to gain the trust, or try to engage the community, that hangs over our head. And so, we have to have a united front, and we have to be solid. We have to be consistent. We have to be ethical. We have to, you know, all of the things that we talk about on a regular basis, we all have to buy into. So, Pat, go ahead.
I just wondered, all that nastiness at the beginning, was that all local people?
That's all our body worn cameras.
Just since you got those body cameras?
Correct. Yeah.
The initial video was a squad cam from Officer Martin.
Right, yeah. You heard the announcement in the beginning of the video, shots fired, shots fired. That was Officer Jim Martin's shooting up on Gilbert Street, 725 Gilbert. That was the actual radio communication. And the officers that you saw running were on the north side of the apartment building. Jim was on the south side, going up the steps. And so, then, they heard the shots. They were in the parking lot on the other side of the building, heard the shots, and they had to run around. So, yeah, that started the video. So, anyway, any other questions? I just have a few slides that I'm going to -- don't hesitate to get up and get more food, or, you know, take a break. There's bathrooms just down the hallway here to the left, or anything that you need, let us know. I just put our org chart up, just to let you know that we're basically three divisions. We're administration, we're investigations, and patrol. And obviously, patrol has the most of our staff members, three quarters of our staff members in patrol, and that's really our backbone. We have to, if our patrol's not successful, the department won't be successful. I put this up because we used to, at one point, have a deputy chief's position. Most, just about all departments our size has a deputy chief's position. A number of years ago, we decided on a trial basis that we would eliminate the DC, go with captain levels. We have just decided it's not the best for our organization. It doesn't work the best. We have specialties. All of these guys have their specialty areas, but they're all equals. So, when I'm gone, and I elevate one to acting chief, then they're trying to make decisions for the investigative bureau, that that's not their expertise. They don't have really supervision over that area, and vice versa. And so, I'm just going to quickly touch on this. I am going to be seeking a deputy chief's position, but it's not going to be a new position. It's going to be elevating a patrol captain position. We have two right now. It's going to be elevating a patrol captain to deputy chief. So, the only difference financially is the difference in salary between a captain's position and a DC position. So, what that is right now, I don't know. We have to do some research yet. But I need somebody to oversee all operations, so we don't have just our specialty groups trying to, you know, so Matt and Ben are in patrol, but they're, as an acting position, they're also then making decisions for executive bureau, which isn't their specialty, where when I have a DC position, they're going to see all operations. The other thing is, we really want to keep our talented people here. You know, I'm just going to be frank with you. We've got great people. We've got good leaders, but they're being recruited. Ben has been -- people have reached out, headhunters have reached out to Ben and asked him to apply for chief's position. I want him to be here, because we know how special these guys are. We want to keep our talent here. Just wanted to touch on this. 6213 is the state statute that gives the authority for police and fire commission to govern and oversee police and fire operations. So, I can only do so much as the police chief. I look to police and fire commission to basically, they approve all of our promotions. They handle discipline. We handle discipline if up to suspension, but if it's a suspension, a demotion, a termination, that all goes to the PFC. Okay? And it's also the PFC's job to hire or terminate a police or fire chief. So, when I do retire, it's going to be up to the PFC to handle that. But they do have to work in concert with the council, and they will, when that time comes, I can tell you, the PFC, I've already talked to them about this, they're going to have listening sessions with our staff, with all of our staff, and they're going to also engage the city council on what you guys want to see, and how you feel about current So, that just tells you that they choose the police and fire chief. This talks about discipline. The way that we handle discipline here, it's a little bit different than other departments, because if it's a serious discipline, if it's a suspension, it would normally go to PFC or termination. So, what we usually do is, we completely investigate the issue, and then we address that with the officer, and we give them, I present them an option. I will say, "I recommend a two-day suspension. You can sign off on that. You can accept that. If not, then I withdraw that, and then I'm going to file charges with the PFC, and then the PFC has a regular hearing. It's just like a court hearing, where we have people testify. I would testify. The supervisor investigating would testify, and then the PFC would make the decision." So, I give them the option. Either we handle it internally with their approval, or I pull that and PFC handle it. Citizen complaints, you guys have probably had citizen complaints against the police, and I want you to know how we handle it. Okay? We have a policy we follow, but we take it very serious. And I will, anytime that you are interested, I can take you into my office and show you all of the citizen complaints that we've investigated. So, when we receive a complaint, I hand it off to one of the captains. They assign a lieutenant to investigate it. The officer is interviewed. All of the witnesses are interviewed. We have body worn camera footage. We have squad footage. We have everything, just like a regular investigation. And then, it's compiled into a report. It's sent through the ranks to myself, and then we make a determination on what it is. So, oftentimes, there is people that aren't satisfied with my decision. They don't believe me. They think that I'm protecting the officer, or whatever. And so, they will go on and make complaints to the PFC, police and fire commission, and then the PFC will sit down with me and say, "Let me review your investigation." And if they don't feel it's sufficient, they will conduct a, you know, more investigation. We've had in the past certain citizens that have called Channel Nine, Channel Seven, Daily Herald, our state representative, the FBI, the governor's office, and they call me and say, "Hey, we got a complaint about so-and-so. What have you done?" I pull out the file. I share it with them, or they can come here and take a look at it. So, we're not hiding anything, and believe me, if an officer, if we determine an officer has done something wrong, they're held accountable. We hold all of ourselves accountable. And so, we're not afraid to tell you, "We messed up," but we're going to do better. Just a little bit about our organization. We have staff meetings, monthly staff meetings with all of our supervisors, come together once a month, and we talk about what's going on currently in the community, our needs, training issues, issues maybe with personnel, staffing issues, current events, community events, you know, how we're going to staff them, et cetera. So, we talk about that. But then, we also, in the last few years, we have chosen a leadership book, and each supervisor takes a chapter, and then they read it. Well, we all read the book, but then they present. Every month, they present a chapter of that book, just so that we start. We want to make sure that we are honing our leadership skills, and from day one, when we hire officers, we tell them, "Start honing and developing your leadership skills. Don't wait until there's a promotion, or a pay raise, or whatever. We need you to be a leader in this community right now." Transparency and communications, we have, we believe we have become more engaged with our local media since we have all been in the command position. I know since I became chief, that was one of the things that I wanted. It was a goal of mine, and to, the first thing that we did was create a daily log. You probably remember this. You know, this has been going on now ever since I was chief, but that was the number one thing I said right away. We need the council and our leaders, elected leaders, to know what is facing this community, and what our challenges are. I need daily logs so that they can read what's going on. Now, the daily log doesn't tell you everything, but it tells you, when an officer writes a report, what that report is about. And so, it gives you a little bit of insight on our department from a daily basis. We are available for the media on a regular basis. They all have our cell phone numbers. We get calls at night, on the weekends, and that's our expectation, because we want to be available for them to answer questions. Succession planning, I would feel that I would be, I would consider myself a failure as chief if I did not have succession planning going on in our department and at every single level. So, we identify leaders in our department that haven't even been promoted yet. They're leaders. They're good officers, and we identify talents and strengths that they have, and assign them certain things, whether it's a school resource, whether it's CRO, community resource officer, whether it's K9, whatever it may be. We identify our talents and leaders and put them in position. We also identify leaders that we feel would be good supervisors, first line supervisors, and send them to first line supervision training, even though they're not a first line supervisor. We do the same thing with middle management. We identify first line supervisors as lieutenants, send them to middle management school, and these guys go to executive level schools. I want every level to understand what the next level is, what they're thinking, why they make those decisions, so they're prepared. That's succession planning. And when I leave, you know, a compliment to me would be if they replaced me with somebody internal. That means I've done my job. Social media, if you don't follow us on Facebook, I encourage you to do that, because we have done a pretty good job of letting the community know things that we're dealing with in our community, and we do that by Facebook. And sometimes, what we do is, we tell our story, and that has happened in the past, where we have felt that the story that we want to get out, the facts of the story, weren't necessarily reported. And so, therefore, then, we've done that ourselves. We have, if you remember back when, you know, when there was a press conference, and they said, "Wausau Police is racist." Okay, well, we looked that incident up, and we released all of the information, and then we did so also on Facebook, so that, because we, you know, that hurts us. That hurts our image, if somebody says you are a racist department. And so, we needed to defend ourselves, or tell the story, and that's what we do. Recruitment and retention, and I'm turning it off to Captain Glimmen. Turn it over to Captain Glimmen.
Going back to telling our story just for a minute, with the racial profiling incident, we had, we went to the press conference, Matt and I did, listened to what they had to say, and then, you know, met with the reporters afterwards, and we had all of our reports from the incident. We had three different squad videos from the incident, and then we had it all ready for them, and we shared the entire case file with the media. And then, the headline in the report that came out the next day was pretty shallow. It was pretty narrow. So, I don't judge for that, but it's difficult for them to share the entirety of the story in an article, unless they're going to use three or four pages of that paper. So, we felt it was important enough for us to share that entire story on our Facebook page, and so, that's what we, you know, that's what the chief was talking about. That's why we do that. When we feel there's more information out there that we need to provide, that's what we do.
Ben, can you just share how many people reached that Facebook post reach?
Sure. Lieutenant Beaton and I were looking at it the other day, and it's reached, the post has reached about 840,000 people. So, it's really got a very wide reach. Obviously, that's much larger than our population here in Wausau. But the issues that we're facing here are the same issues that police departments are facing across the country. So, when we have an issue like that here, it's good for us to share it so our community understands, but it's also good for nationally, when it kind of goes viral, for everybody else to see what we're dealing with, and it's no different than what other departments and communities are experiencing, just on a maybe a little different level. So, I'm going to skip, I'm going to go to this one first, and talk about recruitment and retention. I'm really passionate about recruitment and retention. The most important thing that we do as an agency is hire people. If we pick the right people to be here as a part of our organization, we're setting ourselves up for success many, many years down the road. Hopefully, you know, the people that the chief has hired in his career have set our community up to be a very successful, engaged community. So, it's very important to us that we hire, that we find and hire the right people. One of the things that we are is mission focused and values driven. The Wausau Police Department strives for excellence in policing by partnering with the community to enhance the quality of life. That's our mission statement, and it's not something that we just plaster on a wall and on our business cards. It's something that we believe in to our core. It's something that we think is vitally important. The more that we engage our community through community partnerships, the more connected we are, the better we're going to be able to address the issues that are going on in our community. So, it's very important, from the chief, all the way down to our newest hire, and even down into our CSOs, who are non-sworn, part-time staff, that they understand what it is that we're trying to accomplish as a police department. Our core values, professionalism, accountability, integrity, and respect. Every single time that we have a disciplinary issue, whether it's a minor coaching session, or up to and including situations where we're looking at termination for an officer, these are the things that we talk to them about. We talk to them about professionalism, accountability, integrity, and respect. If we're following those core values, then we're going to be all right. The decisions that we're making, as long as they are made within our core values, then we're going to be okay, and that's what we try to instill in officers. And at the end of the day, when it's about retention, I think, you know, we all get caught up in just, "Oh, well, I've got to go to work today," and we come in, and we go through the motions, and we leave, and wonder, "What is it that we accomplished here today? What did we actually do? Do I feel good about what I accomplished today?" So, one of the things that we talk about is the positive impact we can have in our community. And we can do that every single day, in every citizen interaction. We can add a teaspoon of trust, add a little bit of trust in the bank, like the chief talked about, and we can have a positive impact on people's lives here in the community. And that, if we can have people on our department that are trying to make a difference every single day in the lives of people in our community, then we're really accomplishing a lot in our community. So, with that, I'm going to go back to this slide and talk just a little bit about our hiring process. Our hiring process takes between four and six months. Six months is the long end. Four months, if we're really trying to rush through it, which we did kind of push to get it accomplished in four months of this most recent hire, just because we had recruit school starting, which I'll get to in a little bit. But we hire officers who might not have police training, and we put them through the 18 weeks of recruit school. So, we had a deadline to meet, so we had to get through that recruitment pretty quickly. But it starts with a written test. The written test is really a basic general aptitude test. There's a math section, an English section, a writing section, and if the candidate passes with a score of 70 or more, then they get to come in the afternoon of the same day for a dual interview. There's an interview with our field training officers, and an interview with a couple of command staff members. So, there's two separate interviews, and from there, we narrow it down, and we cut people, and we bring the remainder back in for a field training interview a few weeks later. That's also a dual interview, where we also have a command staff interview that same day. But when they come in for that field training interview, they bring in their background packet, because a step after is to do a background investigation. We've got that actually a little background there. Go on. These two are the same day. They bring the 30-page background packet, and we ask them about every address they've ever lived, all the schools they've gone to, any police contact they've had in their entire lives, what is their credit history, who are their references, obviously, employment history. All of those things we ask them. And we tell them at the outset, at that written test, that we're going to be asking these things. We want you guys to be honest and truthful with us. Integrity is essential in our job, and we need you to be honest, because at the end, we have a polygraph examination. So, if you lie to us, we are going to find out, and you won't be a candidate for us, because truthfulness and integrity is vital to our job. But inevitably, we go through this entire process many times, and we end up finding one or two people that disclose things in the polygraph examination that they haven't previously disclosed, and we end up eliminating them from our process as a result. So, that background investigation, we sit down with the candidate, we go through the packet, we do an hour or two-hour personal interview between our background investigator and the candidate, go through that packet, and then our background investigator goes out and talks to all of their references, goes to the schools they've gone to, goes to their old jobs, goes to police departments in the communities where they've lived, to see what kind of contacts they've had, to try and determine they've had, uh, to try and determine, uh, what kind of character they have. At the end of the day, we're looking for people that have the values that mesh with our values: the professionalism, accountability, integrity, and respect. Those are the things that we're looking for. After the background investigation, those who make it through come back to another command interview, um, and then, uh, we select the, you know, if we have three positions, we'll select the top three and ask them to go through the polygraph examination, uh, which is done in-house by Detective Strobock, uh, who's been doing that for many years. After the polygraph examination, we give a thumbs up, they get a conditional offer of employment, and that conditional offer is conditional on the successful completion of a psychological examination and a medical examination to make sure it was a good fit to be a police officer. And that psychological examination, uh, is done down in Milwaukee, uh, by Dr. Childs. And then finally, at the end of all of that, if they're still around, we bring them in for the Police and Fire Commission interview, uh, to get the official approval to, to give them the starting date of hiring. Any questions on our hiring process? Pretty intense.
What's the oldest candidate you've ever had?
Oldest candidate we've ever had? I don't know. I know we've had, we've had several in their forties. Uh, you know, I know we had one, two, two recruitments ago that was forty-one. I mean, generally their career. Yeah, exactly. Um, and you know, and kinda to that-
That's a question we can't ask them.
Yeah, we can't ask that, that's true. We end, obviously end up finding out, but... To, kinda to that end, what do you guys think that these people have in common? I think, you know, you guys probably know a lot of these folks. Matt Barnes, Lieutenant Baton, a lot of these guys from the room, Ben Graham, and, and Nick and Nate Stetser.
All Wassa East graduates.
No, I don't think they're all Wassa East graduates. No, they're not. Some are, some are Mosany.
They're good-looking.
They're good-looking. All of these people, um, these six are, you know, these five are lieutenants, Matt's a captain, and, and Nate and Nick Stetser are, are local hires. They've, uh, they've been with us since two thousand and twelve, uh, who are outstanding officers. A school resource officer, Nate runs our, uh, works down in our Community Resource Unit. Those are all officers who, prior to their employment here, didn't have recruit school. So, that's a, that's a significant thing to, to identify, uh, because we're one of the few agencies in the state that will hire somebody who doesn't have that recruit school, that police certification, and then put them through it and pay their salary as they go through it. Uh, we have two currently that are going through the recruit school at, at the tech. Uh, and the reason that we do that is because, as the chief always says, "We'll hire for character, we'll train for skills." We're looking for people who have, um, a unique character set, and if they don't have that, they're not for our agency. So, all of these individuals, if we didn't have that policy of, of spending the time and the resources and money to send our new hires to recruit school, none of these folks would be with us today. And I think that's really a testament to the value of sending our officers, uh, that don't have prior law enforcement experience through the Recruit Academy. Um, it's an investment, it's a significant investment. I was in a class just earlier this week where, uh, a number of sheriffs were asking, "Hey, do you guys, do you guys pay for people's salary to go through this recruit school?" And I said, "Yeah, absolutely." And I, I gave them this example. I said, "This is really important for us to do, because we can find people who have great character, or maybe looking for a career change, or maybe never thought about law enforcement. Uh, maybe they're a little bit older. Maybe they went to, uh, a four-year university, and four-year universities don't have the recruit school as part of their curriculum like a lot of the tech schools do. So, uh, maybe we can, we can grab some of those folks." Uh, so, it's really important to us that we do that, and I just wanted to point that out to you guys. That is something unique that, that we do that. Not a lot of agencies do. We also have a lateral entry program. Like, we're always looking for the best candidates. Um, so, within the last couple of years, we decided to, uh, to implement a lateral entry program. So if officers have experience, uh, in full-time law enforcement, uh, they can apply to us. If they get hired, they can apply to the chief, uh, for approval to get into our lateral entry program, which gives them year-for-year credit in our salary structure. So, uh, Luis, he's been, what, he was hired in twenty fifteen, Jason was just hired in this last recruitment, uh, in August. And, uh, so Luis had ten years at, at Cronewetter PD. Jason, he's actually a local guy, uh, he graduated from Wassa East actually, and, uh, he spent thirteen years full-time employment in Sheboygan. So he goes out and, uh, there's not a whole lot to do in field training with a guy like that, because he really knows what he's doing. Uh, and, and he's a, he's a real good-character guy. Uh, we're lucky to have him, but he was able to come in and start at the top of our pay scale because of our lateral entry program. And if we didn't have that, he, he would never have, have applied to come to work with us. So I just wanna talk a little bit about the educational level of our officers. Uh, we do have two attorneys. Think we have any attorney, any attorneys in the room?
No.
So one of them was an attorney prior to becoming, coming into law enforcement. Uh, we sent him to recruit school. He's now a police, he's actually a detective lieutenant for us, Nathan Siler. And, uh, Court Buckner, he went through law school as he worked here and, uh, became an attorney, and he's a detective with us now. We have three individuals with master's degrees. We have thirty-five individuals with bachelor's degrees. Um, and just one thing I threw out there is, is we used to have an educational incentive, uh, but that was, uh, that was taken away probably eight to ten years ago, I think, something like that. Um, but I think it's something, you know, education's really important to us. The chief talks about training all of the time. Um, and the more education that, that our officers have, I think the better off we are. So I just, I threw a plug in there for educational incentive. Uh, so one of the challenges that we've had with the recruitments is, uh, we've been doing so many of them. We have seventy-five sworn officers, uh, we had, um, we have nine officers still with us that started in twenty fifteen, and nine that started with us in twenty sixteen. So we have eighteen new officers between the last two years, which is almost half of our patrol division. Our patrol officers, we have about forty, forty-two positions in our patrol division, and eighteen of them are brand-new officers. Do you have questions?
Someone made a ask, "Why do we have so many officers?"
That's a legitimate question. Why, why do we have so many officers or so many new officers?
Uh, as large of a department we have. Uh, the staffing clock, yeah, I suppose is a bit connected.
Sure. Yeah, I think, um-
How many we have on duty, et cetera.
Right. So we have, we have seventy-five sworn officers. It's been pretty consistent for a long time. Uh, we had probably, we've added a few positions over the last three or four years. Um, but if you look at a, a ratio of officers per thousand people around the state, uh, we used to be really, really low. Or we, uh, if you looked at agencies our size, uh, we really didn't have the number of officers that most other agencies had. Um, we're, we're getting to a point, we're kind of in the middle now, um, in terms of staffing levels and, and officer positions. Um, but, I, I don't know if we have somebody talking about call volumes, but, I mean, if you look at our daily, daily logs and daily reports, our officers are taking lots and lots of calls. They're extremely busy. As time goes by, we're asked to do more and more things, and it's more complex things like solving, solving problems with our, our homelessness downtown or, or the intoxicated individuals at the four-hundred block. Those are really time-consuming things, uh, so we, we need staff to be able to, to address those issues, um, if, if we're the agency to do that.
Yeah, the, uh, the state average is, I believe it's two-point-two officers per thousand, and the federal, uh, ratio is two-point-four officers per thousand. Uh, so we're at about one-point, uh, seven-five here. We were at one point the lowest in the state of Wisconsin. We were at one-point-five-two or something ridiculous thing. So we were able to increase a little bit, but we're still well below the state average and, and well below the federal average.
Yeah, sure. You have no voice?
I have no voice.
I'll interpret. Twelve-hour shifts, you want?
You have to do it in Sherry Voice, though.
Okay, so your, your question is about, is that good for our staffing levels or isn't it? Um, yeah, I mean, I think for, at, in the middle of the day, it helps us with staffing levels. Um, I, but what we've really identified is, um, you know, it, it helps us a little bit, but not enough where it's really significant. Um, you know, to the point where, if, if officers like the twelve-hour shifts, you know, I think it, if they were up to us, you know, we'll let them work whatever shift it is that they want, because I, I don't think we've seen, um, a significant, uh, reduction in overtime or anything like that as a result. Um, and there are, there are difficulties that come with a twelve-hour shift. Um, just to touch on that a little bit. So it's a fourteen-day cycle. Uh, if, if officers work Monday and Tuesday, they have off Wednesday and Thursday, and then they work Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So out of that first seven days, they work five: Monday, Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And then the second week is exactly the opposite. So they'd have off Monday, Tuesday, they work Wednesday, Thursday, and then they're off Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays. So the, the nice thing is that they have every other weekend is a three-day weekend, right? Twelve-hour shifts is a, twelve-hours is a long time. You're driving around in a squad car and, and taking a lot of calls. Um, so it's, it's a long shift. Um, but, uh, I just lost my train of thought, what I was, what the point I was gonna make there.
But at the same time, the, one of the big benefits that our officers will talk about is a three-day weekend, and the, the amount of extra time off, because, you know, I'll just throw a pitch, that our families suffer as a result of, previously, you'd get weekends off. You'd go through a cycle of weekends off every three or four months, and if your, your kids are saying, "Can we do this this weekend? Can we do that this weekend?" Or your spouse. I, I think that the twelve-hour shifts have really improved the home and family life for our officers. Yeah, I think that's the real benefit that they see.
Yeah, I think, plus the retention, Ben, because we, we actually lost a couple officers to other departments because they meant twelve-hour shifts.
Yeah, good point. Yes.
Does Everest Metro have a staffing comparison in, in number of officers per thousand? And that, but that's a different kind of a police department, but yet then I think also of the township of Ray Mountain, where they have one county deputy to do the entire township. Uh, do we, I mean, this is a two-part question. Are we called into the, uh, Mount and help out on occasion at any time?
Uh, it would be the rare occasion that we're called up there. Um, if there's a major event going on, we'll, we'll go respond and assist. No different than if we have a major event, Everest Metro or Marathon County comes to assist. Uh, but it's really rare for us to go there and assist.
And about Everest Metro comparison?
Um, I don't have the numbers. I can certainly get those for you, um, but I don't know what the ratios are. Chief, do you know what the ratios are for their, uh, officers per thousand people at Everest Metro?
Yeah, I believe it's around, uh, one-point-six.
A little lower than ours?
It's a little lower than ours, but their call volume is a lot different, too.
Yeah, for sure. Lieutenant Baton?
Ben, I was just gonna offer that relative to that question or in that topic. I think the Wassa Police Department, we offer a lot of, uh, services to the community that, as I travel around in different trainings, I learned that aren't readily offered by a lot of other agencies. Um, that, that might seem somewhat insignificant, like perhaps vehicle lockouts, or, um, you know, responding to a, an incident of a vehicle break-in where there's no suspects or anything like that. A lot of our agencies have started to cut out the responses to those. The Wassa Police Department will still respond out. We wanna have that interaction with the community. We want to try to do what we can to offer those services, um, with still a comparable amount of officers, but they're really doing, uh, I don't wanna say a lot more, but they have a varied amount of tasks that they're responsible for.
Any other questions? Yep, do that. Okay, so we talked a lot about the, um, the young department. I did do a comparison. I should've done a comparison on the ratio of officers, but, uh, I, I just wanted to touch on, um, on our salary. Of course, you know, we, we, we have officers that come here because they wanna be police officers. That's what they wanna do for a living, but at the same time, they do wanna get paid and, and get paid a, a fair wage. So, I just did a comparison with our local agencies to identify kind of where we stood. I, I really didn't even know before I sent, uh, emails out to the, uh, to these agencies, but, um, so we have, we have a matrix that, uh, if, if, there's a starting wage, and then there's four steps that you, that you go through in your first nine years to get to the top patrol officer pay, uh, paid. So, what I've got here is the top salary as of January first of twenty seventeen, and how long it takes to get to that top salary. So for us, the officers, uh, January first will be paid thirty dollars and forty-four cents an hour as long as they've been here for nine years. And then you can see Marathon County's at thirty-one fifty-nine, um, and, uh, Mosany, Everston, Cronewetter, um, are a little bit less there. But one thing to identify is that our officers, after working here for three years, are at twenty-seven ninety-one. Um, and it takes them six more years to get to that thirty dollars and forty-four cents per hour. So, all of those other agencies are at a much higher rate for those first, they, almost the first decade of service. Uh, so, so our scale is such where the top pay is, is comparable with those other agencies. However, um, it takes a lot longer to get there. So if you look at, uh, career earnings of an officer who'd be here for their entire career, um, it's, it's quite a bit less than officers in other agencies. So, just something I wanted to identify, because it's important for retention that we're paying our officers commensurate with what they're doing and the work that, that they're providing. I think if, uh, if we compared call volume, uh, our officers are responding to a lot more calls and handling a lot more complex issues than, than officers in some of the smaller agencies. So this is, this is a picture from the Rip Fest. Uh, we had it on Facebook there for a little while. I was one of our trainees and, uh, one of our FTOs who found a lost child. It's just a pretty cool picture. Our field training program, we view as an extension of our, of our hiring process. Uh, we do have individuals that come on and start with us, thinking law enforcement's the career for them, and they get here, they start going through the training, and realize, "Hmm, police work isn't what I thought it was," and, uh, they either choose to leave, or, uh, we, we, they don't make it through and we have to ask them to leave, uh, because they're unable to, to handle the, uh, they don't have the skills to handle the, the calls. Um, so it's a, it's a difficult program, but it's, it's vitally important. Um, I think all of the, um, officers in the room here today have been field training officers, uh, earlier in their career. It's a really essential position. It's really the first leadership position that we have for people within our department. Uh, there are four phases to the field training program. Uh, the first phase is basically, uh, almost shadowing the training officer, kind of in the lay of the squad car, seeing how to talk to people, uh, learning about the report system, and that's about, uh, five weeks. Uh, the second phase is another five weeks. They go to a different trainer, and then they start doing more of the, more of the work themselves. And then in the third phase, they're doing almost all of the work themselves, and the, the trainer is just kinda watching and helping as, as necessary. And then the final phase, the fourth phase, is a couple of weeks where the field training officer just wears plain clothes. They try to kind of blend into the background and, uh, and totally let, let the training officer take, take everything and do all of the work that, that's needed, uh, just to make sure that they can handle all of the workload that is necessary and that they can handle appropriately. Uh, our field trainers go through every single policy that we have. Uh, Ben Graham, I touched on our, our policy manual here. He's worked on it extensively, and it's, it's very, very big. I don't remember, seven-hundred pages or five-hundred pages? I don't know. Something, something really big. But they go through every single policy with the officers to make sure that they understand it. Uh, beyond the policy, there's a procedure checklist that they go through. Uh, you know, if you're handling a sexual assault call, this is the checklist. These are all the things that you do. You go to a domestic violence call, here's the checklist, uh, to make sure that they understand and know everything that they have to do. And then every single day after the shift, the, the field trainer sits down at the computer and scores that, uh, that trainee, tells them, "Hey, you did great on these categories. Here's where you need improvement," and gives them that immediate feedback so they can correct their actions and, and get that. And then, once they're out of field training, uh, our, our field training supervisors do quarterly, quarterly evaluations on all of them until they're finished with their probationary period, uh, which is eighteen months long. So we've kinda touched on some of these already. Um, training is one thing that, that Chief Ardell was, uh, thinks is really important, and I definitely agree with him. We have, uh, officers have a really good opportunity to, to experience a lot of different types of training. Um, and, uh, we try to tailor it to their interests. We let them put in requests to go to different types of training. If they're interested in, in drug work, then they, they tell us they're interested in drug work, find training, and, uh, and then that comes through, uh, all of us to determine whether or not they, they're gonna be allowed to go to that training, depending on our budget. Uh, but it's a really key piece to our retention, because we want people who, uh, enjoy their career and get to do different things that, um, that they like to do and receive training in those areas. Uh, talk about the accountability piece. Every time we give feedback, whether it's positive feedback, "Hey, great job. You're really professional here," uh, or, "Eh, not so good job. You need to be more accountable in this area." We always tie that back to our core values. That's really a key piece for our, for our feedback. Um, we, we offer some things that some other agencies don't, like the opportunity to develop with the training that I talked about. Uh, we have a variety of assignments, which, when we do interviews with candidates, they go to our website, they watch our Facebook page, and they identify, "We want, we wanna work for Wassa, because, number one, you guys are engaged in the community. You know what you stand for, and, and it seems like a pretty cool place to be." And, they also identify that there's, you know, "I could be on the SWAT team. I could be on the dive team. I could, uh, be on the crash reconstruction team. I can go work in the Community Resource Unit. Maybe be a school resource officer. Have a KNI." There's a wide variety of opportunities here that there aren't at other agencies, which is a, a key piece to our retention and recruitment. And finally, I think one thing that we, we really try to, to stress is the positive impact that we can have in, on our community as police officers. Um, yeah, I touched on that a little bit before, but if, if everybody in our ABC, if everybody in our city believes that when they come to work, they have an opportunity to be a part of something bigger than themselves, they have an opportunity to make a positive impact in our community in a variety of ways, uh, then that's gonna help us with our retention. People are gonna be feel happier about their job, be excited to come to work and, uh, and make a difference in, in their community, in our community. Well, I gotta talk about strategic planning, too. You guys have, Fire Department went through a lot of strategic planning, is that right? Okay, so, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it, other than to say we are working on our str- Okay, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, other than to say we are working on our strategic plan. I know Lisa was here for part of a session, a couple sessions, I think.
Yeah.
And so we're at the point where we're developing our objectives. We should be through with that in the next month or month and a half. And hopefully, by the end of the year, we'll have our strategic plan written. And I look forward to coming to a council meeting and sharing that with you guys on kind of what we've developed in terms of our strategic plan. Mr. Graham, accreditation master?
I'm not in charge of time.
You guys need a break, or are you good?
I'm gonna speak quick on this topic.
You all right?
Yeah.
Okay. So you've probably heard the term accreditation associated with things like hospitals, schools, colleges, things like that. What does accreditation mean to police agencies? Well, what accreditation is for us, it's a voluntary process whereby an agency is evaluated based on the existence of and in compliance with prescribed standards. So there is this board called the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group that's consisting of 15 different members who are either in law enforcement directly or they're in some related discipline. And what they do is that they evaluate police departments based upon what they feel are the highest standards in policing. So when we talk about how one of our core values is accountability, this is one way in which we hold ourselves accountable by having this independent outside body come in and evaluate everything that we do. So why is it important? Couple of reasons why it's important. It provides us with a well-deserved sense of professionalism and pride because we know that we are serving you to the best of our ability. Secondly, communities gain security and the knowledge that their agencies are well-managed and are using the best police practices in the state of Wisconsin. Prosecutors also have that assurance that enforcement operations and personnel are consistently well-directed. And finally, local officials, like yourself, know that there is an independent review and evaluation of agency operations. Yes, Joy?
Is that done annually?
Well, it's gonna be done for the first time in December of this year, so we have...
First time ever?
First time ever.
Okay.
Yes, so...
And you... This was voluntary?
This is voluntary.
Wow.
This has been my pet project for the last...
Because I know what a hospital accreditation is.
It's fun, right? Really easy. It doesn't take a whole lot of time.
It's under the microscope.
Yeah, come in my office and I'll show you the file cabinet. So one point that's not up here is that, you know, it'll reduce liability for the city. It's not gonna reduce it to zero, but if we're operating to the highest standards of policing, we're gonna be doing the right thing, probably, and it should reduce our liability as a city. So what must we prove?
Ben, you got a question?
Yes.
I think he's about to answer it.
Aha.
I mean, how does the accrediting person or agency tell whether you're doing a good job or you're just shining your shoes?
Good. So we have been in a self-assessment process now for at least the last year. And what that means is that I have overhauled, or multiple people have overhauled, our policy manual to make sure that we have 430 standards or dimensions set by YLEAG are explicit in our policy manual. So there was a lot of tweaking that needed to be done to make sure that each one of these standards or dimensions were spelled out. But now there's a total of 580 standards or dimensions that we must meet. So one of them might mean, or might state, officers while on duty will wear their seat belts, okay? So it could be as simple as that, or it could be as complex as what I'm about to get to. So in December, we have a team of assessors that will come in during a three-day period, and they will look through each one of those 580 standards. And so 430 of them will have to be spelled out in policy, so they'll be looking specifically at our policy. And what we have to do is we have to actually take out that section of policy, highlight it, tag it with the appropriate number so that they can just look at it quickly, make sure the language is in our policy. And then we need to be able to prove that we are complying with that policy. So I gave you the example of seat belts. All officers should be wearing their seat belts. Well, the proof of that might be, well, an officer was unfortunately involved in a traffic accident, but on the accident report, the box is checked that the officer was wearing his or her seat belt.
Do they ride along?
They will ride along. They will conduct interviews. They will have an open forum for the public to come in and to speak and ask questions. And it'll be a busy three days in December.
That answer your question, Pat?
Yes.
So what's a standard dimension? If you can see it, this is just an example titled "Search and Seizures." So the standard is, a written directive governs the conduct of agency personnel in affecting searches, seizures, without a warrant, in the following situations. And then we have eight different dimensions. So we need to have a policy that talks specifically about search with the subject's consent, stop and frisk in situations where the officer has, and so on. So our policy must spell each of those things out, and then I need to go out and prove that we're complying with those. So each one of those sub-points, those dimensions, I need to have either a report or a photo or video or something that says, yes, we're complying with our policy. Make sense? So a goal for 2016... Yes, Ben?
Yes, sir. And one thing that I think is a huge component that's sometimes lost on this. We also have to get all 75 of our staff to understand the new policy and what these expectations are and get them to function quite frequently in a new way because the standard and expectation of us as part of accreditation has changed.
So our goal as an agency, or one of the goals for our agency in 2016 was to become accredited. A goal for 2017 is to roll out something that we call daily training bulletins. So Lexipol is our policy partner. They provide us with policies that have been vetted by attorneys, and they're always updating them to make sure that we are abiding by federal, state, and local law. And they also provide us with these DTBs, daily training bulletins. In a nutshell, the DTBs bring the manual into practice through real-life, scenario-based exercises emphasizing high-risk, low-frequency events. So each month, what this company does is they provide us with 30 or 31 daily training bulletins that we have to tweak to make sure that they're aligned with our specific policy because when they give us policies, sometimes we need to change them to fit them to our agency. And then we push them out over the internet to each of our officers, and so it might take them five minutes to go through the scenario, which also hyperlinks to the policy as sort of a test. Because we have 166 different policies to date, and most of those policies are pages long, and so it would be impossible for someone to retain all of that information. So through these daily training bulletins, we're bringing this to the attention of our officers more frequently. Captain Barnes?
That's me, I guess. I feel like I got lucky here because I have a relatively short presentation here. I won't shoot the laser in anyone's eyes. One of the expectations that was put on our communities going back seven, eight, nine years ago was that we have an Everest Metro Police Department. We have just down the block the Marathon County Sheriff's Department. We have Rothschild Police Department, Cronin, Mozzany, all these jurisdictions in our local area. And they're like, "Why don't you work together on some initiatives?" Not only can that be financially in the best interest of each community, but it also brings expertise and partnership with the communities just enough themselves. The three agencies that we partner with the most, we have the Wassa Police Department, Everest Metro, and the Marathon County Sheriff's Department. One of the full-time cooperative teams we have that I neglected to put on here is our Special Investigation Unit. And that's the drug unit. They do a lot of undercover buys. They do undercover work. They do large federal investigations in regards to narcotic trafficking. And that's housed and supervised by the Marathon County Sheriff's Department. It includes a lieutenant who's a sheriff's deputy. It includes two deputies who are investigators. The Wassa Police Department allocates two officer positions to participate in SIU in Everest Metro, puts one. And that's a team that goes out and does a tremendous amount of work. I can tell you, we don't have a budget here to have a Wassa PD SWAT team, but yet we have instances throughout the year that are high-risk, whether they be high-risk warrants or we have armed and barricaded individuals, that we need a SWAT team. Marathon County Sheriff's Department supervises and maintains all the equipment for the SWAT team, but members of Everest Metro Police Department, the Wassa Police Department, and county deputies all make up the actual human resource for the SWAT team. Same thing is true for our dive team. I'll show you pictures. They have what's called the Bearcat, which is their up-armored vehicle that can take rounds. That's the combined team. They have capabilities that the average person in the community maybe doesn't know they have. They have the ability to explosive breaching. That's what they're doing here. They're putting explosives on a wall to blow a hole in the wall to be able to get in. But at the end of the day, they're the ones that have much higher quality, but their body armor protects in a much greater way than the body armor of an average patrol officer. And they get to do stuff like propel out windows, and our average officer doesn't get to do that. Another one of the cooperative teams we have is the Marathon County Dive Team. It's also run out of the Sheriff's Department. It consists of an inflatable boat. They have a pontoon boat like this where the center's cut out so they can dive right down off the deck. They're not a rescue. They don't ever end up getting to rescue anyone. They're a recovery group. They recover vehicles, evidence. They can do underwater crime scene processing. And unfortunately, every year, there's numerous individuals that have to be recovered from the water. As with anything that we do, when the dive team first got together, it was a bunch of guys with scuba gear. Now it's a bunch of guys with dry suits, with comms in their helmets, and they use high-tech sonar and imagery to identify the targets in the lake prior to actually diving on them. Both of these teams spend one full day a month training year-round. So dive team spends a lot of time under the ice. When they need to bring cars up, I just thought this was a neat picture. Two bags like that that they add air to underwater can pull a vehicle up from the bottom of the river. The last team I want to talk about, which touches a little bit on what Chief Ardell was talking about earlier, is our Critical Incident Investigative Team. And this, again, is a partnership between Everest Metro, the Sheriff's Department, and the Wassa Police Department. It's not really run by any individual agency. But what it is, is if we have a significant use of force as an incident, an officer-involved shooting or an officer-involved death, we need somebody to investigate that. Chief discussed that in our last two shootings, we used the Division of Criminal Investigation. But we have to have a group available and trained. If DCI says no when we ask them, they have a limited number of resources and ability to do that. Part of that conversation over who to use in what situation, in all honesty, has to do with, who do you want to be able to release the information? How quickly can they get that investigation done? Because quite frequently, the district attorney being able to make a decision has a lot of bearing on, when was the investigation done and turned over to them? So we maintain a little bit of control when we have partner agencies that are local and willing to commit that time. But it's a tough decision for us to decide who to use, but we do have people that are trained to play that role. My last topic for you is current and future needs. And if you look in our annual report, I said one of our jobs is to look at, what are we gonna need so that we can educate you and hopefully have you support us? The first one I want to bring up is crossing guards. And this is kind of a pitch to you as well, because if any of you want to be a crossing guard, I guarantee you, I will provide you with a job, two hours a day. Or if you know of anyone that you think might enjoy doing that, we can't find people to do it. And as a result of not being able to find people to do it, we have our staff, that that's not their job, working in intersections. We have had sworn police officers park their squad car and have to sit there for an hour already this year. And we're up to 20 or 22 hours of parking staff who, at the beginning of the day and end of the day, have to go out and perform those crossing guard duties. I thought about just talking to the school district and saying, "What if we eliminated some of these intersections that maybe get less use?" And I didn't realize the impact that that had on the busing, and they would have to change their bus routes and add buses, which changed dramatic financial impact, and they were less than receptive to the idea of reducing the intersections that we provide this service at. So this, we have marketed in every feasible way I can think of to include all the poll workers for the city, all the social medias, different advertising arms. Jennifer Kanberg in HR has done a great job in doing that. Great job in marketing it, not necessarily in receiving a lot of people interested in it. Things to come, next month, those of you that are on the finance and HR committees will hear us come talk to you about clerical staff. We haven't... Our quantity of work has continued to increase and increase and increase, and we haven't added clerical staff here. It's reached a point where the ability for us to keep up with and maintain the expectations of the public in seeking records and getting them filed and getting them submitted to the state appropriately, we're not able to keep up. We're going backwards. We have brought in summer help, basically college students in the summer to help us with that. During the summer, it helps keep us kind of with our head just above water. So we're gonna be coming to you with some possible solutions in how to address that. It's great that the city council funded body worn cameras for us. But two years ago, and I'll be providing more information as I present this to the council, but two years ago, we averaged 100 open records requests a month. And two years before that, it was maybe 75. But prior to all this electronic great gadgetry that everybody wants and video, we just made photocopy of the report, edited, redacted what we needed to, and sent it on its way. We have certain criteria and rules that we're governed by in what has to be redacted out of our records. So that includes being redacted out of videos. So for every hour of body worn camera footage that's open records requested that we have to provide, it takes a clerical person sitting down for at least an hour to watch the entire thing and use the editing software to redact the information that we can't provide to the public. So the number of hours it's requiring our clerical staff to do, but they can't keep up with just the paperwork and of what they're doing. So that's the challenge that we're going to be bringing to you. Many of you are aware of many of the mental health and AODA issues in our community and the issues facing North Central Health Care. That also impacts us as well as the community because our officers are frequently the first-line individuals dealing with those people and their needs. One of the things we're looking at, and we're not quite sure how it's gonna work, is we feel like we need to partner more with the healthcare center to be able to make sure we're providing the best service possible. One of the things in the future that we're gonna try testing is having crisis, mobile crisis workers work out of the police department. They will be dispatched to scenes from the police department. What that does for us is it gives us a relationship between our staff and their staff, hopefully less of this and more handshaking as a result. But also, if you look at Dane County, which when I go wander State Street a couple times a year, I see plenty of individuals that reminds me of some of the individuals we deal with here in Wassa on a regular basis. They also had a problem with the number of commitments, AODA and mental health commitments, in their county. They instituted a plan where the officers, they assign, instead of being a drug officer, you're a mental health officer. And that's what those individuals are trained up on, how to deal with these mentally ill individuals and deal with crisis situations. And attached to their hip is a crisis worker that partners with them every hour of the day. So they have a staff, I think it's four officers, I'm sorry, two officers in Dane County, two mental health crisis workers. We detained in 2015, I think, 470 some individuals at the healthcare center where they had to stay the night. Dane County had 175. So when we talk about the needs of these organizations and how much space is down there, well, maybe if we provide a better service on the front end, there's less need to have the expensive service on the tail end. We're not quite sure how that's gonna work, but it's gonna be a future need and it's something we'll be discussing with you.
Well, that brings to mind this thought is that, and you may have covered this, but in the same and in a different way, that if this individual, this professional was there at the front line, he could identify, yes, this is definitely something that this individual needs to go here, or they could re-identify differently and maybe cut down on the number of trips to CHC?
Well, it's not necessarily to say that there's less need for professional mental health services, but if we can get to that individual before they have to be committed and be inpatient and provide them with outpatient services or get them connected with the right resource to help them, not only are they a more productive citizen, but it ultimately reduces the stress on our facility because the most taxing part of that facility is they have 16 beds.
Yeah.
And frequently, we have 20 people that need to spend the night there. So we're shipping people outside of our county to other facilities to provide those services. So hopefully, in getting them those services on the front end and identifying who those at-risk individuals are. And at the end of the day, the better trained we are, working with them hand in hand, the better decisions we're making for those individuals.
Do you find that when you have those situations where you have people that are either, you are in that scenario, that perhaps in the lead-up or in the weeks preceding that serious incident, were there other contacts that happened between that person and police that if... were there other contacts that happened between that person and police that if, you know, that response had been more front-end then, that maybe the more serious event wouldn't have happened?
You bet. So, we'll get called to do a welfare check and we'll go identify this person, and they don't meet the criteria for us to take their freedom away. But, we know there's a problem here.
And it's just a matter of time, something.
Yep, and so at the end of the day, we're like, they don't meet our criteria, they're not interested in receiving services from us now. They don't want to voluntarily take themselves down there, so we're on to the next call. Well, this, the purpose behind this team is, the next day then, they're also going to go out, knock on the door and say, hey, can we talk to you for a little bit? How you doing? Hey, have you thought about this? Have you thought about this? And they might get each feet, get out of here. But then the next day they're going to go back, and they're going to continue to create relationships, because at the end of the day we spend ninety percent of our mental health time with the same ten percent of the population. So, identifying who those individuals are that are at risk, getting them the services they need in a more efficient and effective manner can really reduce the cost to the community and reduce the burden on the healthcare center.
So if it starts as a situation where somebody's off meds or whatever, sooner that gets discovered and dealt with, you may not have the other two or three calls.
Right, but you also need officers who, to be honest with you, have a lot more training in it than I have. Because we ask them to be counselors, we ask them to be parents, we ask them to be teachers, and we ask them to be mental health professionals. And at the end of the day, Captain Bliven just got done telling you about, we teach them to be cops. But, you know, they don't have PhDs in psychotherapy either. So, it's making sure the right people are in the right place to provide the right services. I threw equipment up here because I don't know what equipment we're going to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, talk in his ear.
I'll try to talk loud. With the mental health school opening up here, the psychiatry school, medical school coming, are we going to be hooking up with them at all to get them more involved with the mental health issues that we have? Are they going to be working with the police department at all?
I don't know, the question is, with the mental health school opening up here and training mental health professionals, are they going to be partnering with the police department? My hope is yes. And to be honest with you, the reason I want to say yes is because we need more of them to stay in our area and work here. We can't recruit enough mental health care professionals to our area. So hopefully by partnering with the police and them getting to see how great we are and how committed we are to this topic, that they might see this as the community that they want to stay in. But that's a great point, I just don't know the answer to it yet. Equipment, everything changes for us. If someone would have told me ten years ago that our officer's going to be walking around wearing cameras on him and we're going to download them up to the cloud and that we could just ship an email to have people watch the videos out and said, you're living in Star Trek land. But here we are today. So, the needs of our officers are constantly changing. I can tell you our officers really appreciate the fact that from as long as I've worked here, even through tougher times with different councils, I have always felt like this community supports our officers, makes sure they have the equipment that they need. Most recently, one of the officers came to us and said, why don't we have helmets? I said, what do you mean helmets? We give you riot helmets. He says, no, 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 did you see what happened to Nina? Where an officer took a rifle round to the forehead? And his department happened to provide him with a ballistic helmet, and he put it on as he went to that call. And he had a really bad headache and a concussion, but he's alive today and working as a result. And he said, shouldn't every one of our officers have a helmet? So when we go into a call where we know there's guns present and we're going to be dealing with it, that we have that equipment to wear that's at least full approved for our heads? And I thought, I can't argue with that. So, we came to the council last year, we got half the funding to provide half of our department to be able to do a transfer of funds that we had left over. And we were able to thank our local drug dealer through some federal forfeiture money to provide the rest, they're ordered, they'll be getting delivered shortly. But, what's the next piece of equipment we're going to ask you for? I don't know, I just know that it'll show up because it always does. We have one detective right now who's a computer investigator, Court Buckner, who had a real interest in computer stuff. He can forensically analyze computers, take them apart, download phones, all the fancy stuff from CASI, you see on TV. But he's also in the twilight of his career. And it takes about a decade to take someone with no certifications and get them to where Court is right now to take his place. So when we think about succession planning and what are we going to do, the reality is, I don't know that that's the most effective way for us to deal with our need is to have people computer savvy to be able to deal with those things. So, our need might be to expand our workforce here and hire people that show up on day one who are really capable of doing those things as opposed to trying to find the best officer we can and start training them from the ground up. There's also some analytics that are really coming to fruition in law enforcement which say, let's make decisions data-driven. You don't know what you don't know, and having an analyst present to be able to help evaluate that data and find out what data's important to collect. Don't know if we're going to do that, but these are things that are on the horizon. And last but not least, we've checked our email maybe ten times today and got online. Captain Bliven and I worked with staff at the Technical College, because one of the things we think is really a need of this community is services for our victims. And specifically mental health services. So I'm going to paint the picture for you. You know, twenty-one-year-old girl calls the police department and says, I was raped. And so our officer, male or female, doesn't matter, goes up, meets him at the emergency room, takes their statement, gets their information. This young lady unfortunately is violated a whole second time in the course of having an evaluation done over to collect evidence of sexual assault. And the women's community shows up and says, hey, we can do these things for you, and then we're like, see you later. And there's no, if there's ever a person that needs some psychotherapy, that would be it. We deal with people who show up home from work and their house has been burglarized and the front door's kicked in. And we show up, we process the scene, we collect the evidence, who might have done this, don't know, maybe we catch the bad guy, maybe we didn't. But we've also seen those individuals where they no longer work after that, they can't function because they feel like their privacy was violated and they don't trust the world anymore. Well, they're not getting mental health care services, and we can provide them with pamphlets. But, the grant we applied for through Volca, which is a federal grant run through the state, in essence we asked over a three-year period of time, which would be about three-quarters of a million dollars, because our goal is to hire a psychotherapist that works for us, that when we have victims of crime, they're out making contact with that individual and partnered with a detective position, so these would be two new positions funded in their entirety by this grant, to be able to go out and provide those services, make sure there's a single point of contact, and make sure those individuals in our community that really need some of those services, very similar to an EAP, they could get three, four sessions of counseling with our therapist. If that's not enough, then this team would make sure that they're holding the hand of that individual to get them to the best services possible for them. And at the end of the day, this is a, this is a brand-new concept for a police department, we just saw a need for it. And the fact that there's billions and billions of federal dollars and victim dollars sitting waiting to be spent that has to be victim-oriented. And we thought, what are the needs? Really, we have lots of people that, they're the victim of a crime and their whole world changes as a result. Yes, sir?
On that note, the victim services, even the one before it, the computer investigation and whatnot. What do you think the potential is for more of a county focus on fulfilling those needs rather than a Wausau focus?
Well, I can tell you from the victim services, I'll work from the bottom up here. This is a brand-new idea. We came up with it, we applied for it, and we believe we have enough work here in the city to keep that individual busy. I think that if it were successful, the expansion of it might be working with the county to work as a joint team to do that. As far as the analyst computer investigator, the county has one as well. And has all the equipment, we have one as well and have all the equipment, and they're both so busy they can't keep up. So, at the end of the day, really, we have to be self-sufficient in an organization our size. Mozzanee PD, for example, they don't have a computer analyst. So, all of the analytics and investigations and technology like that, for everyone really outside of the city of Wausau, is being completed by the county. So, I know that they're housed in two different places. They share equipment currently, they share ideas, because if you're one guy and you're struggling with a technical problem, you want to be able to bounce the idea off of your counterpart. So they do that right now. The possibility could exist that as the need for that continues to grow and grow and grow, that it might even just need to be a third-party entity. When I started at the police department, all of that work was done by the state. So they had three or four really smart guys that like computers down in Madison, and we'd ship everything down to them and they'd process it, and they just can't provide that service to us anymore, and they expect us to do that for ourselves.
But we would surely support shared services with other departments in this area, if that's what it came down to, better. We should be aware of that and look at that for saving the system.
Well, it seems like it's a great avenue for partnership, because it's interesting that you mentioned that, you know, with the volume of people needing services from NCHC. Just last week, at the council meeting, we had Michael Lloyd come in and talk to us about the situation over there. And right after that, the council passed a resolution encouraging the county to work out its differences. But, he specifically pointed out to us in his presentation that an amazing number of people receiving services from NCHC are Wausau residents. They live here, they're from here, or they've come here, but, you know, they're not all coming in from the other two counties, they're not all coming in from the suburbs. A lot of them started, start and end right here.
Yeah, at the end of the day, when we look at, when we look at our cooperative teams, whether it be the Special Investigation Drug Unit or the SWAT team, I guess I wouldn't say that with the dive, because we have a really limited amount of waterway in the city. But, we get the better end of that deal, hands down. Because where are most of these drug arrests occurring? They're occurring in the city of Wausau. Where are most of the high-risk warrants and the times the SWAT team's being called out? They're being called out in the city of Wausau to assist us. So, from a financial standpoint for the taxpayers of Wausau, looking at their police department, this is absolutely the best bang for the buck to be able to provide the appropriate services.
Unless your future analyst investigator be put through the gauntlet of becoming a police officer? Or can he be a, an individual with these skills, but not have to go through all of the vetting that an officer does?
Great question, and the answer to that is, no, they don't have to be a police officer. They have to be capable, you know, when you hear the word forensic, that just means that you testify in court and you're capable of doing that. So this would be a forensic computer analyst who, part of their training is to learn how to testify in court, learn the rules of evidence. But this would be a civilian position here. It's going to be an expensive civilian position, but at the end of the day, this would be an individual that is just capable of testifying. And they would work with officers that bring cases to them and say, hey, I need this done. They would do that technical component of it, give the rest of it back to the officer, and then the officer could go conduct those interviews and complete the rest of the investigation. Any other questions? I think that's, oh, go ahead.
When you read the mental health and AODA training, you were mentioning Dane County versus Marathon County, we have higher numbers.
Yeah.
What's the reason for that?
Because they do a much better job on the front end with
Oh, okay.
Because they had similar numbers and recognized the problem, and then they made the investment in saying, hold on, we need to take some of our officers and partner with the mental health workers and send them out as a team specializing and focusing just on that. I mean, one of the thoughts when I look at the future needs, especially in our downtown development area and the homeless and alcoholic, drug-addicted individuals that really live down there, well, my expectation of this team would be, in between crisis calls, and they're not going to sit here with their feet up. They're going to be down there working with individuals, trying to identify which members of our community need what type of services and create a relationship with them so there's enough trust to get them that. It's a real struggle for us just to say to our patrol officers, go deal with them. Because they're not there enough, and at the end of the day, they don't trust them. When our officers are there dealing with them, they're not really arresting them. So, to have individuals go down there, like, at the end of the day, they might go to Subway, fill a cooler full of subs, go down there and say, hey, here's who we are, guys, let us, what do you need? Oh, you need a blanket. They'll have a trunk full of stuff to make sure people can stay warm and provide them with some basic necessities. And what the other communities that have done that has found, that earns a lot of trust from that population. And that puts them in a much better position to get them those services. And the last thing I'll leave you with is, we have a whole bunch of trinkets and stuff in the back, we're really proud of our department. We even have T-shirts that have our values and our mission on it. I would be really proud if anybody in the room took one of those shirts and were willing to wear it out in public. I would encourage you to do that. So, that's the end of my portion, thank you.
Oh, yeah, okay. We have just a few quick slides here to talk about the Community Resource Unit, and this will be sort of in the spirit of, not really a cooperative unit, but more of a special unit within the police department. So just a few slides on the Community Resource Unit, and then we're going to break it up by kind of taking a break, people can kind of go do their thing. Not that you can't get up right now and go grab a drink or use the restroom. But we're going to see a couple of different areas within the police department. We'll visit one of the officer's offices, so their squad, as it were, and we'll see all the technology that the officers are really responsible for being competent with on a regular basis. So, currently I supervise our Community Resource Unit. I'll tell you just real briefly the story behind these officers that are plainclothes but have their vests on and their guns and their, at this lemonade stand. We were conducting a drug interdiction night one evening where we had some addresses that we received several complaints on. And we were going to just offer up some surveillance, try to make some traffic stops, see if we could work closely with our K-9 units that night and try to affect some arrests for drug use and maybe progress some investigations. And somewhere in the middle of this interdiction evening, I received a text message from one of the officers saying, there's a really excellent lemonade stand at the corner of whatever it was, it was over on Callan or somewhere on the west side. So I pulled up and I was driving a Nissan Quest, I think that night is what I was driving. It's an unmarked vehicle, but it's equipped with police radio and lights and sirens. And so I stepped out and these kids were like, wow, you're like the second police officer that showed up here tonight. I said, well, you might be getting a couple more. And I showed them my phone and this text message, and they thought that was pretty cool. And sure enough, right at that time, we had two more officers that pulled up in like a Chevy Malibu or a Nissan Altima or something. So we enjoy getting out and interacting with the community. So the Community Resource Unit is, while not completely like autonomous from the rest of the police department, we're down in the basement, we have a little more latitude with our schedule, we're able to deflect our schedules a little bit more easily. We're not assigned to patrol shifts per se, so the officers that are within that unit are able to adjust their schedule as needed to address whatever issues may come up. Started about four years ago, really an outgrowth from the large amount of drug tips that were coming in that the cooperative unit of SIU that we share with the Sheriff's Department, they just really were unable to meet those needs, to address all of those tips that were coming in. The caliber of complaint that SIU tends to investigate is a little larger and starts growing, these are more longer-term investigations. But we were still getting a large amount of neighborhood complaints, right here in our, in our community, within our city limits, that were affecting the quality of life for people in their neighborhoods. And so, the chief thought, hey, you know, there's a need here, there's a void that we can fill. And so, with, actually Ben Graham, Lieutenant Graham was in there at the beginning, and he was working really heavily with our Chronic Nuisance Ordinance Enforcement, working with landlords, working with tenants to address nuisance behaviors, which very, very frequently included drug activity. And that's where we started really seeing a lot of progress with that. So we currently have four Community Resource Officers assigned. Officer Stetzer in the back, Nate Stetzer's one of those officers. He actually replaced Lieutenant Graham when Lieutenant Graham was promoted. And so Nate is really our liaison with our landlords in the community, he works very closely with them. For example, if we execute a search warrant at a residence for drug-related activity, I know Nate will be contacting that landlord sometimes that very day, but if not, very often then the next day. And formulating a plan on what we can do with these tenants that are in there. So some of the things that the Community Resource Unit has response before, primarily for the drug investigations, for responding to these complaints that come in, probably many of the complaints that you would receive from your constituents about suspected drug activity, those complaints will filter down to the Community Resource Unit, and we try to offer a very timely response to those complaints. Because again, those are really affecting the quality of life for people in those neighborhoods. Really within the last year and a half, we've seen a little bit more prostitution activity. We will conduct prostitution stings on a recurring basis. Fugitive apprehension, if some officers of the detective bureau might be looking for someone in particular, again, we have a little bit more latitude with our schedule, we're able to go out and try to locate these people and find out where they are. We work very often with confidential informants, some of whom have some drug issues, some of whom are concerned citizens and really just want to help us further our cause in making Wausau a better place. And then of course, all of our Community Resource Officers are pretty actively engaged in conducting some presentations on a whole variety of topics. While primarily we're conducting undercover drug investigations, it seems a lot of times that the resource the community might need comes in a different form. So for example, not too long ago, I gave a presentation to a group of senior citizens on winter safety. That was something that I guess I never really thought I'd be doing when I went down to supervise the Community Resource Unit. And so, these officers are very, very flexible and are able to address a lot of different needs. You're not really going to be able to see this, I'm guessing, but this is showing a smattering of statistics. Going back to 2014, the most recent numbers are this August right here, and then this is 2016, year-to-date, as of August. So, what we can see when we're looking at that, so far this year we've conducted in the Community Resource Unit, in the Community Resource Unit, 22 search warrants at, so residential search warrants, we've also conducted several vehicle, phone, or Facebook or social media search warrants as well. And then we've seized about 400 items of drug-related paraphernalia this year so far, including, let's see, some of our notable ones here, we, just this last month, we, we got almost a, nearly an ounce of heroin, and about two, two and a half pounds of marijuana, and over $16,000 in cash in, in seizures on, on, again, on search warrants. Primarily, these are coming from our patrol officers that are responding to calls such as a domestic-related incident, they detect an odor of marijuana while they're in that home, or maybe they'll notice some items of paraphernalia in plain view, and then they can give us a call. So they can continue to address the initial response issue that they were called there for, but because of manpower issues and time constraints, then they're going to call the Community Resource Unit and say, hey, you know, we have some other evidence here, some drug-related behavior, is this something that you would be willing to, to come out and address? So I'll get called, really at any, at any time of the, the day or night, and we'll, we'll call a few of our officers in the unit, and we'll respond out to address that issue, apply for a search warrant if necessary, execute that warrant, seize that evidence and, and items, and then bring that back and process that. And then we'll continue on with interviewing those suspects if need be, and then trying to progress that investigation, again, just so we can clear up some of those, some of those tips. I think that, again, so in the, in the two years that I've been down there, I've really seen some very positive interactions with our community on a, on a very kind of frontline, tip-of-the-spear manner. Going out and interacting with these people who've had to perhaps put up with a, a party house or a suspected drug house next to them for months, or maybe even the last year or more, and then to see that sort of come to a resolution, and then speaking with them afterward, that, that's been pretty meaningful for me, and I hope for the members of our unit as well, to see that what we're doing in the Community Resource Unit really is making an impact in a, in a very tangible, in a very tangible way. We work very closely with the Special Investigations Unit, with Marathon County, the, the drug unit. Very frequently, some of our investigations may mushroom outside of the city limits, we will generally brief them on what we've encountered, work with them to kind of hand that off, maybe we've developed a confidential informant that has information about drug activity outside of the city into the county's jurisdiction, and we will work with them on that, and vice versa. If it's a manpower issue, they'll call us to assist them with, with certain things or search warrants and the like. Questions at all about the, about the Community Resource Unit?
I have just a comment.
Yeah.
This, I think the CRO unit and the School Resource Unit really, but Community Resource especially, really should be celebrated as a source of pride for the department and for the council, because in 2012, the council held its retreat, and we asked council members, what are the top three things people complain to you about? And everybody said the same thing, drugs, blight, and crime. And we wrapped that up in a need package, and we said, well, we got to solve drugs, blight, and crime. And where did we go with the solution for drugs, blight, and crime? Right to the police department, and we said, help us solve this, and out of that came the CRO unit. And the impact that they've made in neighborhoods has been just amazing. I mean, prior to that formation, you would have residents call you, because it really is the unit that we as older people deal with most, we'd have people call and say, well, there's a drug house down the street from me, and so we'd send an email, there's drug houses down the street. But SIU being as busy as they were, they didn't have the time to handle the single drug house or that party house. And so, you know, we looked ineffective because the resident that complained didn't see that solution happening, and now they do. And the CRO unit even has been instrumental in helping us, most recently, in closing a problem tavern that had, Clubhouse Tavern had such a terrible impact on its neighborhood, on South Third Avenue, that, that, that unit actually went out and canvassed the neighborhoods and said, tell us about your experience with this place. And the feedback helped us close the place, and, and really restore some calm and some order back to the neighborhood. So, and that just is something that we all should be super proud of, because they make, they make that difference every day for people.
Well, I appreciate that feedback, and I'll tell you, Officers Max LaPorte, John Phillips, Sarah Beddoes, and Nate Stetzer, they work extremely hard down there, they put in a lot of hours, they come in at all hours of the night, leaving their families, and they'll come in and they'll, they'll address these issues and put in the time that it takes to, to, to resolve those problem areas.
We also would be remiss to mention Karen Kelvok was on the cutting edge of this.
This is...
This is really when it started on, on North Third Avenue. Lieutenant Ben Graham worked with, with Karen and your neighborhood group, and that's really what, what mushroomed, that was the impetus to create this CRO unit, because we saw the success there, and, and we have seen that type of success all over the city.
It really has snowballed, and it's just, prior to that, you'd get a call, even at one point, we had a resident who kind of acted like an informant, amateurish, but still an informant, and would say, I've given up, I call, and no one's working at that time, because it's going on at 11 o'clock at night, and they leave at five, and, you know, he was working with SIU and that wasn't working. But once the CRO response started, and complaints would come in at night when the activity is prevalent, and the response was there then too, the, the impact was just felt immediately. And I mean, you could just feel a calm coming to the neighborhoods that before felt like they, they didn't know where else to turn, and about the same time CRO launched, Marathon County AOD launched its Push Back Against Drugs campaign, so they went out the community and said, take back your neighborhood, report everything. Well, reporting everything is awesome if there's a response when they do it. So, thank God, CRO was there though to meet those phone calls, or there'd have never been any positive results.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you, the longer I'm downstairs with the Community Resource Unit, the more I see that it really embodies the mission of partnering with the community to enhance the quality of life, and I think the officers in that unit get to see that in a very intimate way, because they have those interactions on a regular basis, and, and get to start at the beginning, see an investigation through, and, and interact with the people afterward, and hear how grateful they are that that issue was resolved.
It is amazing.
And I hope it really impacts those officers.
It does, and it's amazing to us as older people, because I've gone through situations where I get people calling me and telling me, I'm selling my house, I can't take this neighborhood anymore, to calming down and staying because things are better. That's what we want to see.
Real quick story, so we had an issue, many of you probably are aware of the issue on Ethel Street, that we dealt with for quite some time.
Before my time.
What's that?
Before my time.
But it's in your district, please.
But you wrote about it.
But they, they dealt with that issue for a while, and, and our CROs worked it and worked it, and finally, when we had enough information to go in there with a search warrant, we got the squads and we had everyone there, and by the time we carted everyone out in handcuffs, the neighborhood came out of their houses and were giving the officers a standing ovation as we were carting them away. I mean, that's the impact that Todd was talking about on, on the neighborhood.
One of the things I think, I've got a cover story out of Karen's adventures up there, but I think one of the really nice things that I picked up from doing that story was that those people had like one or two contact people at the PD that they knew they could call, and they didn't have to bring them up to speed. You know, they would call Tom Smith, Tom Jones, whatever the guy was, and they would know exactly what the neighborhood situation was, they know who the caller was, boom.
They called Ben Graham.
They called Ben Graham?
Yeah. You're right. And Ben was, was, he was briefed and he was informed on everything that was going on, so it didn't take that long to, for him to get up to speed.
Yeah, that worked.
And I think what really drives this, what's really driven home for me in all this is, I, I live in the city, I have a family, I have five kids of my own, and, and to see the frustrations that people are experiencing when they have to live near something like that, and, and feel that they have no other recourse other than maybe to sell their house, or, or go somewhere else with their family, that, that really affects me, and, and I think it affects a lot of the officers, because the officers can identify with that. Why? Because they have families, many of them live, live right here as well in, in our community, and they want Wassa to be a really good place. So, kind of like how Captain Blighman was talking about, we have this, you know, great education and great variety of experience and, and depth of, of, of leadership ability and aptitudes, we also have a lot of compassion and understanding, because we're, we're part of the fabric of, of Wassa, and, and we, we are, you know, kind of stakeholders in really what goes on here.
Well, and the, the really great part was, as a result of that, CRO unit and its function, came the expansion of the School Resource Unit to start to address what kids experience on their way to and from school, and it really started out in the Public Health and Safety Committee where, when John Newton was still the principal at Franklin, there was a pretty significant arrest event right outside Franklin School, and all of a sudden in the committee one night, we had him and Kathleen Williams in front of us saying, fix this, these kids are not safe coming to school. And John Newton told a story that I later told him to come and tell to the entire council, because they all needed to hear it, because I, I surely did hear it. He had a little kid in his office that lived near there, and he was so afraid for that child going to and from school that he was going to walk him home, and the little kid said, well, Mr. Newton, don't worry, I see that every day, it's no big deal. He was used to it, they should never be used to it. And so expanding that School Resource Unit and putting that outreach into the middle schools, and then, and devoting it back into the grade schools to get that trust relationship with those kids, has been tremendous. And now as the parent of a kid at John Muir, because there's all sorts of different things happening at John Muir, the relationship that Officer Cornell has with those students is amazing, it's just amazing. And, I mean, we just, we could not do that if we didn't have the department putting that priority and that emphasis into making a, a better community. So it just, the CRO...
Like you said, it's about partnerships too, though, because when Wassa Schools came to the council and came to us and said, we've got this issue, how can we address it? They were willing to partner with us, and they're financially funding that additional neighborhood officer, which we wouldn't be able to probably do without their assistance.
Should we get up and move around?
Yeah, let's, let's take a little break.
We need to ask some people. So, we've had Mike Felder, he's going to stand here. I just want to show you how this works and what we have the ability to do, so when you guys are in the council chambers doing your thing, of course we're spying on you.
Of course.
Yeah, you know, so we want to see what's going on, but these cameras that you're funding for the 400 block, we can pick anyone we want, we can throw it up on, on the alternate screen and be able to watch what's going on.
Can you see?
Yeah, it's a big mouth.
I want you to look.
I want you to do a little break. The guy that actually uses it around.
Well, there's the back of the wall.
We just have that one enlarged, so that's how many we have it set up for right now.
So we still have some wall space as the need for additional cameras throughout the community grows, to be able to monitor these, but these are also being recorded and we can go back and view what we need to later, so.
So you didn't see my illegal U-turn out there?
Well, we saw it, we're going to discuss that later.
Gary.
See a lot of people turn left.
So this seemed relevant to me, that you guys are funding camera choices and, and having this presented to you, to at least see on the tail end how we utilize them and pay attention.
No, is that same thing true with, is it just these cameras, or do you have the parking ramps and whatnot as well, if stuff's happening?
I don't know if we can pull the parking ramps up here, but the...
They record themselves, but you don't see them?
But we can pull the parking ramps and the library up off of our computers, which is through a different system.
Actually, that can be put up there, their monitors, I think, can be put up.
Yeah, I just not logged in yet.
Sure.
It's actually a computer screen.
Is that a continuous recording of this? And in the Jefferson one, yeah?
I think they run like a thirty days. Eventually they override each other.
So do you get sound with those then?
No.
There was one on the way down as we walked in the stairs.
So, just want to show you a couple of things down here, we have our briefing room, which is in here, I guess we could at least take a quick peek at it. Wanted to quick step in. So this is where the officers will start their shift, the patrol officers rather, will come in here, will start their shift, they'll learn what sector they're going to be working that day, they might receive some specific information for their shift, like, hey, we're looking for a stolen vehicle.
Or these people.
Or these certain people, or something like that. But you can see right behind you here, here's, this is all newly mounted, the, the body cams, the body worn cameras, and this is where they will be required to be docked, that when, when an officer's not working, the, the videos will be able to be uploaded, and that knows a little more of the technology behind that, it's all magic to me.
Ask questions if you want.
Now, are they assigned, assigned by badge number, or are they just grabbed a camera?
They are assigned by badge.
Individually.
That much I know.
Okay.
What are the handprints, like, what is that?
This was made by some officers' children, so, so there's, there is an officer-spouse organization, support group that get together and they do some various activities and outings and crafts, and they thought this would be a fun thing to do, you know, the, representing this blue line of law enforcement, and all of the officers' children had, had put their, their handprints on there.
Well, that's what it'd be.
Yeah, it's kind of a, kind of a neat, kind of a neat installation down here, we like that a lot.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
There's Ben's son, this is your daughter.
Right here.
Lydia.
All three of them.
So we're going to take a quick look at the Community Resource Unit, which is just down the hall.
Just kind of some of your basic stuff down here, break room, actual storage space, some report rooms, with some computers for officers to conduct their business. This is where all the magic happens, this is the Community Resource Unit.
So, we have the, where the lieutenant sits, but then we have, you know, the officers will kind of conduct their business out here, keeping their statistics on a regular basis. We have just a small little area where we can brief on search warrants, and, four of them, correct, yep, for Community Resource Officers right now, again, just a small little area where we'll hold some of our meetings in the mornings or at the beginning of the week to talk about some tips that have been resolved, what we want to make a priority for that week. If we're going to be executing a search warrant, we'll generally use that whiteboard for safety to plan some, some, some of the tactical considerations before we enter a residence. We'll try to gain whatever information we can on that residence's entry points, what door we're going to go in, where we're going to park, all those kinds of things, just to, to make sure that we're being as safe, safe as possible.
And sometimes when they seize pounds of marijuana, the venting must come right through here, because the whole department will reek so bad that we all want to go work outside.
It gets pretty bad, yeah.
Get high, smell it.
Pretty much.
Was this where you have your...
Matt, do you want to go to the cardio?
Yeah, or that.
We have a couple extra bags of Doritos.
One thing I, I'll just take a moment to show you, because at the end of the day, the, the, this is half of our fitness center. This body is not free, I have to work really hard to have it. But fitness is really important for our officers. The city didn't pay for any of this, this was all paid for through the Wassa Police Penitentate Association, including the drywall, the electrical, the flooring, officers hung the drywall, muddied it, taped it, sprayed it, and painted it. So, this is something our officers wanted, and they funded with the significant contributions from the Alexander Foundation and the Dudley Foundation, that gave us grants and funding to get this started. This room started in a, in another room, we'll show you just in a second, that has the weight portion of it, and enough officers were using it, and the things that they wanted outgrew that space, so we added space in here as well. So both of these rooms were built by our officers and funded by our officers with help from those foundations.
Awesome.
And they want a bigger TV, but they're just going to have to live with what they have.
I think what I heard you say, Matt, is if there's a few hundred bucks at the end of the year, you know where you can spend it. A heavy jump rope, as to ask for that.
Fitness class here, one of the things that's interesting, and as we look, we're really on the infancy of looking at, do we want Wassa Police Department fitness standards? And, and the reason that that's now relevant is because prior to this year, there were no fitness standards for officers statewide whatsoever through the state of Wisconsin. And now, when an officer gets hired and goes through the academy, there's an entry level standard, so you don't get to take the academy if you don't meet a certain fitness standard, and there's an exit standard, which is more stringent than the entrance standard. So while you're in the academy, you have to improve your level of fitness to at least meet those minimum standards before you're eligible to be certified as a police officer. And, and you know, there's a realistic argument to be made that you should be able to meet that standard throughout your career. That's a whole nother argument to have with unions and conversations, but it's a conversation we're having, because we think that the, the benefit to our community is significant to have officers that are physically fit.
Well, if a suspect is fleeing, you have to be able to capture, right?
Well, you're supposed to be able to.
Matt, we're going to go back up and then right in front of the Sally Port.
Okay. But I'm a little nervous.
Here's your typical squad car.
That's what the captain said, I haven't got nowhere to go.
Really wanted you just to have a little bit of a glimpse of the amount of technology and equipment that's packed into the squad car, that the officers are, are required to be adept at using, that are really, these items are really important for them to use on a regular basis, to help them in the carrying of their responsibilities.
Interesting piece is that sixteen years ago, when Matt Barnes and I started, the only piece of equipment in here was the radar unit and a shotgun mounted up there, so you
So, you could set a bag in the middle, you could have, easily have a passenger, and you see now it's...
Anybody slams a door, me, I'm not gonna be a passenger.
No, it's that, well, the actual, the radar units right there in the dash, and then the actual, yeah, someone should get that on camera. The actual radar units in the windshield.
Just imagine what's happened back here.
That's the actual units.
And how far away?
That's a terrible statement, but yeah, they put it on when you're going into a known, high-risk situation. And when you're going into that situation, you're arming yourself with a bigger gun.
Goes ear to ear?
Yep, it's, it really what it covers is your heart and lungs, that's, that's it. And so, when we go into those situations, the handgun is not as effective as people think on TV where you get shot with a Glock forty caliber and the guy flies back five feet, that just doesn't happen. So, we arm ourselves with either an assault rifle or a shotgun. Shotguns are, we're, we're actually phasing those out at the end of this year. So, they'll arm themselves with an assault rifle and our take is if you have the rifle in your hands, you better have one of these on and you better have it at the scene.
When we do a ride with in the future, will we get some, do I punch here?
Oh, yeah. Well, they'll put their bag in the back. You, you kinda have to sit with your legs a little bit together because the computer sits a little bit over on your side, but they'll, they'll move some stuff around so that it's accessible to you.
So, a rifle round has got greater velocity than...
Yeah, so the external vest carriers are, are new as far as equipment for the, for the officers, because before they had this external carrier or load, load bearing vest, all of this stuff here was on the belt. A lot of times, you know, some of the stuff was back here, you're sitting on it all day, officers were getting some back issues, and they kinda had to get tweaked out or ironed out. I, I guess I, I don't, I would ask you, is it make a big difference having that off of the waist?
Yeah, yeah, I think it does, I like it a lot. Yeah, I mean, you gotta, you gotta imagine all of this on your duty belt and then imagine sitting in a squad car, sitting in a seat for essentially twelve hours with all that. I mean, it's pretty hard on your back. Yeah, it's pretty hard on your back, so, yeah, this helps a ton. I, I really like it a lot, I, I haven't really heard, I don't think I've heard of anyone complaining about it or saying that they don't like it.
Well, how hard is it though, when tools you need to use are behind you if you're wrestling with them?
And I think what's really nice about it too is they're able to just quickly take this off. If you're coming back here, you're on your lunch break or you're working on a report, they could take that whole vest right off and cool off a little bit, and they're a little bit more comfortable, because before that, you're wearing your vest under your shirt, you're not taking your shirt off and taking your vest off, and I think you're just a lot more comfortable, and I think a comfortable officer is, is really gonna be a more productive officer. You're gonna, you're cooler, you're not gonna be a pain sitting in your car, and you're gonna be more apt to go out and just really be a hard charger, and be a lot more comfortable and able to do that job.
I would let you guys feel it, but it's probably a little bit moist at this point.
But you can see the body worn camera, you know, with the molly attachments here, these little straps, they're able to clip right on.
These come right off, so.
The officers can kinda configure that how they, how they would like. So, what's the street officer, street officer opinion of the body cam? You can speak on us.
Honestly, I like them, I do. I, I was just on a dog complaint about an hour and a half ago, it was pretty bad actually. This female got bit up by one of her dogs, she got in the middle of them, and the one that, I'm assuming, at least I believe, the one that bit her was in the backyard, she was in the little kennel, but there was blood all over his chest, I mean, it was pretty legit. Thankfully, neither one of her kids got bit, but I walked back there with the cam and I, as you saw, I just took it off like this, I walked up to his kennel and I just got a good view of it all over, and so, in all honesty, I actually do like them. I mean, as long as you're, you know, professional and you're doing your job correctly, I don't see any reason why you wouldn't like them. I have nothing to hide, so.
Stay tight.
That's a little bit debatable, I mean, yeah, I mean, to be honest, if you get in a good fight with somebody, I've heard of some, I mean, even Lieutenant Dackel lost one in a little scuffle or so and so, I mean...
You got the magnet on it?
Yeah.
Let's just take it off.
Sure.
So, we are, Taser is sending us some mounts that actually have that same, the same back so it can twist on, but it actually attaches through this molly here, and so it won't, it won't fall off.
Sorry, now it's...
Like with a magnet, sometimes when it gets bumped really hard, it does.
Sorry, Ben.
It is.
Sorry, right now it's mag, it just goes like this here, I'll show you, it's, it's a little tight, I don't wanna stand through fingers.
Now, Ben, if I'm not mistaken, these are paired with a smartphone?
Yep. In the inside.
Real-time footage of a smartphone? Yeah, so you can, so, so an application, kinda like what Officer Puchowski was saying, an application might be, if an officer has their smartphone and they have this app on their, the, the cameras paired with their phone, you, you could potentially reach around a corner with, without, you know, exposing yourself, you could reach your camera around the corner and see if there's anything there, you know, right, right from your body worn cam. And it could sort of become an extension, you know, of, of your, of your, you know, visual ability, yeah. Yeah, definitely.
So, remember when I said equipment and needs and I didn't really give you anything? One of the needs that we truly do have that is we need to put smartphones in the hands of our officers.
Coming.
That's coming, that's coming.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, that's a current, that's a current need for our officers.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, thank you.
Really appreciate it.
No problem.
All right. Any questions at all about any of the equipment in the car or the equipment that the officers carry? We have a volunteer for a taser. Yeah, who's that? Me? Yeah!
Mayor.
So, while we're waiting, I think there's still a couple people off, I'll just, I'll just touch on this. We have listed here false narrative, and, and the reason, and what that means is there are, what I believe are false narratives being, you know, pushed around the nation in the sense that, if you remember during Ferguson, during that incident, there was, it was reported, he had his hands up, officer shot him in the back, and all of a sudden it was hands up, don't shoot, hands up, don't shoot. Okay, when the investigation came out and all of the witnesses and testimony, et cetera, that wasn't the case. Okay, that another, you know, that didn't happen. Another, another example is that police are, are, are targeting black males and shooting them unarmed. Again, I believe that's a false narrative. Is that happening? Has that happened? I'm, I'm, I'm not aware of, of any situations other than one in the last year where an officer has been charged because they made a, a bad decision. And, and they should be, if that's...
The one in Chicago?
If that's what happened, that hasn't come out, we, we don't know for sure, that investigation's not complete yet, but of the ones that are complete, there's been one situation where the officer used poor judgment and, and had been charged. Rightfully shown.
That lady, that woman from, where is it?
Tulsa?
Tulsa.
She got charged today.
Yeah, manslaughter.
Oh, really? Okay, not, not familiar with that, so.
Boy, that came out fast. Yeah. They didn't really say it.
And again, you know, that's...
Oh, is that the guy with the car trouble or whatever they thought he had? Supposedly, yeah, and she's the one who shot. He tased, she shot.
Yeah.
Mm, boy.
So, yeah, we, she should be held accountable. But as far as us targeting certain races, you know, that, that's just a false narrative, but that's why that's up there. Anyway, is everyone, everyone's here? Community engagement, I just want everyone to, to be aware that we feel it's very important for our department to be engaged in the community at a very high level. So, we have officers that are, are part of the neighborhood groups, as you, as you're well aware of, we have officers that are part of the board of directors, and we also are engaged in community and social media. So, we feel that if we have members, you know, I'm on, on the United Way Board, Ben's on the North Central Health Care Center Board, Todd is on...
Boys' Girls Club?
Boys' Girls Club Board, I mean, so, the more that we do that, the more exposure we get, the more that we can get people to trust us as individuals to show our character. Community partners, I, I believe that we have a very strong relationship with our, our community foundations. We have at any, any point in time, and we have done this in the past, if we feel that it's just too much to ask the city council to budget for, or pay for some item that we need, that we feel is necessary, we will go to our foundations, and we've done this in the past. In fact, initially when we went with the Glocks, was it the Dudley Foundation? I can't even, it was Dudley, Dudley Foundation covered the cost for, for our Glocks. The Alexander Foundation, they're very, very supportive of us, in fact, they...
Well, they helped us hire, partially fund us, five officers.
Yep, so, those grants in the last number of years, they also helped us with the workout room downstairs. So, to, you know, community foundation, we've, we've received numerous grants from them. So, we have a good relationship with our local foundations and I think that's key. So, with that, a few slides from Lieutenant Ben Graham.
A few. Ten minutes for the first half. All right. So, use of force is a hot topic nationwide, right? It's important for you to understand that we see ourselves not as warriors, all right? So, we're not out there to occupy, we're not out there to conquer, we see ourselves as guardians, we're here to protect and we're here to serve you. Now, in order to properly do that, there is a need for us to, at times, use force. However, that's not what we go to right away, we wanna seek for voluntary compliance, we never wanna have to resort to any type of use of force. So, I wanna give you a thirty thousand foot view of use of force so that when you see things in the media, in the newspaper, you have a better understanding of what type of force officers can lawfully use and the conditions in which they can use them. So, what we call our training for use of force is defensive arrest tactics, otherwise known as DAT, and it's a system of verbalization skills coupled with physical alternatives. So, again, number one goal, voluntary compliance through persuasion, just asking people to do A, B, or C. However, if they have committed a crime, depending upon the type of crime, the severity of the crime, we may have to resort to some physical alternatives in order to keep them safe, ourself safe, and the public safe. So, we can use force when or to achieve control and maintain control of a resistive subject, to detain persons reasonably suspected of criminal behavior, to make lawful arrests, to defend ourself or another, and then to prevent escape. So, constitutionally, those are occasions when we can use force. Now, when we decide that we're gonna use force, there's a two-word phrase that's made its way through this court case, Graham versus Connaughton, that our force must be, and it must be objectively reasonable. In order for us to judge whether or not a use of force was objectively reasonable, there are some things we need to look at. How severe is the crime? Did the suspect pose an imminent threat to you, us, somebody else? Is the suspect attempting to evade arrest by flight, whether it's in a car, on foot? And then what kind of force can officers use? Three types. A trained technique, we're gonna talk about what some of those techniques are, dynamic application of a trained technique, so not quite the classroom model, but very, very close to it, and then a technique not trained but justified under the circumstances. Examples of that could be ramming somebody with a vehicle, running somebody over, we don't train our officers to do that, but there might be a situation where that might be justified. So, we have something called the intervention options. Presence, dialogue, control alternatives, protective alternatives, and deadly force. Now, an officer need not go step by step through each one of these options. For example, if David pulled out a gun right now, and I perceive that as a threat to my safety, I wouldn't need to begin with presence or begin with dialogue or begin with my taser, I could go immediately to deadly force in order to stop that threat. But presence, purpose of it is to provide a visible display of authority. You've all experiences driving down the highway or twenty-nine fifty-one, you see that state patrol car out there, the turnaround, and what do you do?
Everybody slows down.
Yeah. Brake check. And you check how fast you're going. So, sometimes all it takes is for us to be present, that sometimes calms the situation, it de-escalates. So, some of the things that we teach are open stance, ready stance, defensive stance, different ways in which we engage ourselves with the public. Number two is dialogue, purpose of this is to verbally persuade. Officers are trained in professional communications, they're, they're taught how to engage in search talk, persuasion, arbitration, light controlled talk and heavy controlled talk. Oftentimes where officers get in trouble is when they have a situation where they have the convenience of carrying on a conversation and requesting cooperation, but instead of doing that, they go right to light controlled talk and heavy controlled talk and they begin making demands on somebody, and then instead of de-escalating the situation, we escalate the situation, and while we might be justified in the use of force, in the end, we could have done things to prevent it from escalating in the first place. In professional communications, this acronym, REACT, is one thing that we harp on here at the police department, and we touch on this at least one time a year. And basically, when we have the opportunity to be able to dialogue with somebody, whether it's on a traffic stop or it's a warrant arrest, whatever, we wanna request a person's cooperation. It's a free country, we like to at least present that they have the ability to say yes or to say no. We wanna explain the reason for our contact, allow them to make a choice, and then once they've made a choice, we check whether or not their decision is a good decision or a bad decision, and then we take some sort of action. Now, take a traffic stop, for example, if I make a traffic stop, you know, talking with the operator and I get hit with this odor, this distinct odor of marijuana that I know based upon my training and experience, working, not prior to working. It would, it would not be wise for me just to say, "Get out of the car, get out of the car." I have the authority to tell that person to get out of the vehicle, but what I should say instead of that is, "I, Lieutenant Graham, with the Wassa Police Department, the reason I stopped you is for a, hey, I smell and detect an odor of marijuana coming from this vehicle, and that gives me probable cause to search this vehicle, would you please exit?" Now, I have requested cooperation, I've explained my reason, I've allowed that person to make a choice. Now, what happens after that is up to the person. However, when we're trying to persuade and to arbitrate, there are occasions when it's time to stop talking, it's time for an officer to take action, and that's when he or she encounters danger, overriding concern, no progress, or the threat of some sort of escape. So, now we have control alternatives, so this is where we're going hands-on with people. Purpose of a control alternative is to overcome passive resistance, active resistance, or their threats. And officers are trained in things like escort holds, pressure points, come-alongs. Control devices and passive countermeasures are things like directing people to the ground where we can stabilize them and do some multiple officer ground handcuffing. Now, control devices consist of OC, pepper spray, and our ECDs, ECWs, they seem to come out with a different acronym for these every single year, we call them tasers. Now, these are unique, yes, they fall within the control device category, but they can't be used for passive resistance. A taser or OC can only be used to overcome active resistance or its threat. You think about active resistance, I think I have it defined here, it's behavior which physically counteracts an officer's control efforts and which creates a risk of bodily harm to the officer or somebody else. So, we wouldn't use these things on a peaceful protester, all right? Somebody who's just sitting there and refusing to leave. Instead of using a taser or pepper spray, we would actually go up and we would try to pick them up and move them out of the way if they are part of an unlawful assembly, just as an example. So, since we're on the control device portion, was there a volunteer to be tased? Well, there is. You want to do it now or at the end?
That's good.
At the end, okay. I've got the waiver forms and...
Save the best for last.
I'm gonna leave before that happens.
Yes.
How do you know you can use the device if that person maybe has, that's out, going out like this, but they have like a heart condition or they have replac, replacement parts within them? How do you know to use them? I mean, you're gonna have other side effects and just the...
Yeah, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, we're not gonna know, for example, if they have a pacemaker or something like that. You know, with that said, there are a variety of factors an officer is supposed to look at when they decide to use OC or they decide to use the taser. For example, somebody that is obviously pregnant, we would not wanna use a taser on. Why? Because it creates this neuromuscular incapacitation, you lock up, and who knows where that female is gonna go? Most likely on their face, and then we're dealing with an injury to the unborn child. So, you know, there's a variety of factors that the officers look at. For example, if we're on a deck and they're near the edge of it, we're not gonna wanna use the taser because they could fall off, and that could be... to use the taser because they could fall off, and that could be seen, identified as maybe a deadly force application. So do officers carry the pepper, the OC? All officers do, yes. Now, we don't use it very often. I don't know the stats from last year, how many deployments we had of the OC, but the important thing to remember is whenever we do deploy OC, it affects everybody around. It comes out sort of in a fog, and it's not only going to expose the person you're dealing with, the officers, when they're trying to handcuff, are going to be exposed to that OC, then coughing and...
So let's say the use dramatically went down the first time that we were using tasers.
Right. So I've been here nine years, and I have never used my OC. And I've used my taser maybe three or four times.
Is that the case of the year, the OC?
It is.
But before the tasers work in ICA, I'd go through a can or two a year.
Try some of that, ask him, because they carry it.
He uses the...
Yeah? Yeah. Yeah, it's not pleasant. So we had presence, dialogue, control alternatives, now we have protective alternatives. Purpose is to overcome continued active resistance, assault of behavior, or their threat. So this is really an occasion where somebody is trying to punch an officer, kick an officer, or somebody else for that matter. And our officers are trained in active countermeasures, so punching, kicking, kneeing. Incapacitating technique of the brachial stun, so the officer would hit somebody kind of in the side of the neck here, which would cause an immediate temporary cessation of that violent behavior, might render them temporarily unconscious. And then the intermediate weapon, which is our baton. Never had to use my baton in my nine years, besides to break the window. It's not as easy as you think it'd be. Finally, the last mode is deadly force. Purpose is to stop the threat, and we train in the use of the firearm. So the definition of deadly force is intentional use of a firearm or other instrument, the use of which would result in a high probability of death. So it could be shooting somebody, it could be stabbing somebody with a knife, with a pen, it could be running somebody over, it could be shooting somebody with a taser while they're in water. Not that they'll be electrocuted, but that they might fall and begin to drown. So there are a variety of different things that could be considered deadly force. So when can an officer use it? Well, it's when he or she encounters behavior that has caused or imminently threatens to cause death or great bodily harm to the officer or another person. So those are the conditions.
Is there the intention to shoot at a less deadly area, legs?
Great question.
To render incapacitated or something?
Yeah, I'm going to talk about that in just a second. I'm going to get to that after these next two slides. First of all, we often have the question, why did the officer shoot this many times? Take the last officer of off-shooting we had, the officer shot five times. Shot five times within a matter of, I think, one point one, one point two seconds. Okay, that was the duration of the first trigger pull to the last trigger pull. And it's important to understand that mental chronometry is just a term that means, that measures officers' reactions time. How fast are they able to react to a stimuli, and then to stop acting once they're presented with a different stimuli? So practically, an officer is trained to exercise deadly force under objectively reasonable and justified circumstances until the threat, that treat, is stopped. The boundaries per se are the presentation of deadly force behavior to the cessation of deadly force behavior. So there's this window. Officer is presented with a deadly force threat, the deadly force threat and behavior is no more. So you're going to have this window that the officer will be discharging rounds presumably. And so the number of rounds an officer will fire within those given boundaries are variable and subject to physiology, and officer's reasonable perception of the threat, and the fact situation. So this quote here comes from...
You wouldn't shoot once and see how that went?
That is correct. I would not have entered into this profession if those were the conditions. So let's say that you had a gun, and you started shooting at me, and now the condition was I could shoot once, but now I got to see what happens. And then, shoot again, now reassess.
Finish the job.
Right. So here...
Because that one shot then might have missed the target.
Correct.
And not ended the threat.
Right. And we're going to talk about the resiliency of the offender, which we'll get to your point, Dave, here in a second. But this comes from the Force Science Institute, which does studies specific to law enforcement on studying reaction time. And here they say, "Police officers cannot be expected to defy biological and physical laws as they perform their duties. To require perfect comprehension and instantaneous false reaction by police officers in the field is to require the impossible." And from my opinion, that seems to be the standard to which police officers are expected to operate at in mainstream media. And to send officers to prison when they fail to do the impossible is a most grievous injustice. Only through deference to scientific research, which uncovers the true capacity or incapacity, as the case may be, of police officers to react to threatening stimuli, may we begin to understand how at least some of the deadly force encounters play out between law enforcement and suspects. Certainly, it is our obligation as constituents of the criminal justice system to follow the truth wherever the science takes us. So to the question of, why do officers shoot five times? Why don't the officers just shoot once and reevaluate? Well, let's look at where the science takes us. So researchers discovered the average reaction time to stop shooting is slightly greater than the reaction time to start shooting. So in this study, when officers were introduced to a multitude of stimuli, which is, you know, representative of real-world deadly force encounters, it took officers point five seconds, point five-six seconds to react. And I think in this study, the officer already had the gun out and was like at a low-ready position. So our officers aren't walking around the streets like that. Now physiologically, we would then expect the officer to stop shooting sometime slightly outside of point five-six seconds. Now you don't need to get into the average trigger pulls, I already explained that Officer Martin fired his duty weapon five times in a matter of one point one, one point two seconds. So taking these numbers into consideration, if an officer were to take point five-six seconds to react to a stop-shooting signal, three to four rounds could be fired by the officer as part of an automatic sequence after the signal to stop had already occurred. Think about when you're driving down the street, and you're not paying close enough attention, and you find a vehicle stopped in the roadway. When you apply your foot to that brake, your car does not just all of a sudden come to a stop. You skip, right? So there is that delay time, biologically, physiologically, that an officer cannot overcome by design. So, talking about the resilience of the offender, so why don't we shoot for a lesser body part, or why don't we just shoot the gun out of the subject's hand or something like that? A lot of that is Hollywood. Our officers are very well-trained, but you need to understand that these situations that officers find themselves in are life and death, and they are rapidly evolving. So medical research has found that sixty-four percent of gunshot victims with wounds to the chest and abdomen, and thirty-six percent of those with wounds to the head and neck can survive more than five minutes. Some even able to perform strenuous activity and to continue to physically fight. One example, if you remember, this was, I think, nineties. We had the infamous FBI Miami shootout, in which two suspects were shot in critical locations, including the spine, lung, and head, yet they were able to continue fighting, killing two FBI agents and wounding six more.
Lieutenant, another example would be the state trooper that died over in Fondland area. So he was attempting to contact, or came in contact with a bank robber, and the bank robber was actually around the corner waiting for him. So he came around the corner, and the robber engaged him, was shooting. He was struck, he was hit, the state trooper was, but he stopped his car, got out, and returned fire, shot and killed the robber, but then he succumbed to his injuries and died.
On his first day?
On his very first day alone, yeah.
So...
Hey, on the bed?
Yes.
My question is, what do you do, because I know in a lot of scenarios that have taken place in the past, and they've been online, where they shoot somebody that is on very high drugs, and you keep shooting them, and they never collapse over because of that? What do you do in those scenarios like that? When they're so high, they don't even realize that they're shot or killed or anything else, that they're not collapsing? What do you do in those scenarios? I mean, you're not going to taser them anymore, you've already shot them, and they're coming after you. What do you do in those scenarios?
Right. Well, if it's somebody that's dealing with an adverse reaction to ingesting some type of a drug, we understand those calls to be a medical emergency. So we're getting our med unit on standby. We're not handling those calls with a single officer. We're getting multiple officers there because we understand that, yes, we could tase this person, you know, ten times, and it's not going to have an effect, so we need to find some other way, and that's usually through a coordinated effort of multiple officers coming in, going hands-on with somebody, and trying to get them on a backboard so that we can get them to the hospital to receive some treatment. They can administer some drugs that will have the ability to calm that person down.
Were you asking about the person on drugs that you've shot, and you're engaging in a deadly threat? I mean, the answer to your question is, you keep shooting.
Until the threat is done.
Right. You keep shooting to stop the threat, and when the threat's done, you stop shooting. But in that case, when you see scenarios where the individual is shot, sometimes six, seven, eight, nine times, and the average person in the public looking at it through the media source says, "Why would the officer have to shoot him that many times?" Well, if somebody's high in PCP, they don't feel any of those injuries. You know, heroin, which we have a significant issue with, that's a painkiller. It prevents frequently that individual from feeling the full effects of that pain. So unfortunately, in those situations, when it's deadly force and we're using a firearm, that's it. So you would keep shooting until that threat has gone away.
Do you remember when Daryl Schwartz was shot by the old Wausau East? Some of you that have been around a lot probably remember that, right?
Was that the one over by Sorenson's, on that corner, that intersection? What do the officers...
Sorenson's Flor. Sorenson's Flor, on Seventh Street?
Yeah, there's two officers.
There was a deputy, and there was...
It was Dave Jordan, one of our officers, and a deputy. But they were looking, they heard, it was a call, reported gunshots. So they're out of their squad, looking, they didn't have their guns out, and they're just looking around the area, and Daryl Schwartz came down the railroad tracks from out of the shadows and started walking towards the officer with his hand in his pocket. And they kept saying, you know, "Sir, show us your hands." They still don't have their gun out. "Show us your hands." And he didn't say a word, he started approaching the officers, and as he got probably, I don't know, fifteen yards away, he pulled out a gun and started firing. And at that time, then, they cleared leather, like in fact, Dave Jordan, when he cleared leather, he started shooting immediately. There's rounds in the ground right by his feet, because he was getting fired upon, and he knew he had to return fire. And they shot at him twenty-two times, they hit him eight, and, but they never hit his center mass. So he was shot in both arms, in the lower legs, in places like that. And so he continued, every time he was shot, he continued to try to raise up his hand and fire. And they kept firing, until he finally fell to the ground and then let go of the gun.
You know, the similar story, Tom Hines, who, I don't know, what was it, seven or eight years ago, got it to, had to shoot someone right outside the firehouse off of Bridge Street? Off a bridge in A, was it? And this is an individual that had a knife in his hand and went to stab another officer, Mark Timken, and Tom Hines drew his firearm and fired one round, and it struck the individual right in the chest and the side. And this individual's mentally disturbed, but he dropped the knife. So no more shooting, because the threat is gone at that point. So, you know, there's examples across the board, and it's not shoot to kill them or shoot until they lay down, shoot until the threat has gone away.
So because of the resiliency of the offender and other factors, we train and encourage our officers to use a continuous and rapid shooting technique until the threat is completely controlled. So from the time that we're presented with deadly force behavior, to the time that that behavior is no more. Because at the end of the day, David, you know, I want to go home to my wife and my children, and it's important for us to be able to do that at the end of the day, to protect ourselves, to protect you, and to protect others. So just a brief note on our training. All officers at the Wausau Police Department are certified by the State of Wisconsin and have completed all necessary training to maintain that certification. So they're trained in firearms in recruit school, they're trained in defensive arrest tactics, they're trained in professional communications, constitutional law, all of that. And then, once they are employed here full-time as police officers, on an annual basis, officers must meet the state's proficiency standard for firearms. So we're training in our duty firearm that I have on me, our rifles, shotguns. And then in addition to that, we have eleven, approximately eleven different range training sessions every single year. And finally, on a quarterly basis, all members of the department will receive training in defensive arrest tactics. That varies, it could be things on room clearing, it could be scenario-based exercises where we're using simunitions or airsoft. And it could be classroom model, where we have videos of officers, you know, across the country who responded in a certain way, and then we pick that apart, much like the football team would watch their game film, okay? And we analyze, were the officers lawful in the response? Were they acting accordance to what our policy says? What would you do if you were put in a similar situation? So we try to get officers to place themselves in other people's shoes.
Okay. Mayor, nope, he's up.
We are not tasing the mayor on public access.
No, we'll do it on Facebook.
Just got to change his shirt, is all I ask. I don't want to rip shirts, so... And I'm sure we could be showing this to the police for years to come. For sure.
We still occasionally go back fifteen years, it's VHS now, but like, remember when you got tased? Nah, oh yeah, let's watch it.
Spotter's ready. Mayor, are you ready?
I have a choice, sure. I guess you have a choice.
Okay, okay, okay. I only pressed it once.
At least I didn't swear.
Yeah.
Okay, it's good.
Wow.
How do you feel, felt so good?
Notice that second one, that second one is...
That second probe came on me.
How did it get you?
Yeah, got me twice.
How did it get you? Because I hit it right where he told me, right?
Well, what happens is if you get your hands in between where the probes are, you will get zapped here or there. So what happened with this is...
Oh, he had spotted it by taking it on to him.
So what happened is, if you look, the wire is kind of going over.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't think I...
I'm sorry, you, Mayor.
But I just hit you right where he said it was supposed to get you.
I wonder if that's, I wonder if the probe didn't, didn't go in here?
No. I think it was the wire. Wire lying over your arm, so it circles along the wire, so you were...
You got us both, Bob.
You weren't getting the whole effect of it.
Oh my God.
He was.
Any afterthoughts here?
But you have to listen to the police, and you won't get hurt. Listen and obey. Actually, the pearl...
What, it went off, it's good?
Did somebody pull it out of the bag?
Yeah. And then he started screaming and jumping.
So here's what they actually look like.
Like a little dart. That hurts right there.
So, and you know, what you'll find is that, you know, people that are on drugs, I mean, it's very easy to just break these leads, and then the connection is gone. Or in the winter, when people have heavy jackets or thick pants...
It doesn't work because you can't get a stick in it?
Well, I'm sure he's bleeding just a little bit.
It got me twice. And because the wire came across and was right across my hand...
It was so close, that, you know, the inertia of the lead...
The wires are like twenty, is it twenty feet long, Ben?
These are twenty-five foot.
Twenty-five foot, so what happened was it...
You ought to do it with more distance between...
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I'm bleeding, so I'm just going to...
Because what happened was it hit him, and then the wires kept coming up, and then it came across my hand, and then I was getting short, dude, and I was trying to hold him up. up. No, that's, uh-uh.
So you got a little twist.
Yeah.
See, neither one of them wants to do it again, either.
Yeah.
Who's next?
That's the probe. Oh, no kidding.
We do have, just in case you're interested, I know it's late, but we have a K9 here in case some of you want to see a K9 demo, they're gonna hide some marijuana, if you wanna stick around. But if not, I understand. I wanna thank you so much. It means so much for us, to us, that you are here and that you want to know more about the operations of the Wausau Police Department and how we engage the community. So thank you so much for being here.
Brett, he's pulling up right now. So what we have set up out there is, I think when most, when the public really thinks of contemporary policing, they think of a uniformed patrol officer conducting a traffic stop along the side of the road. So I have my vehicle out here, there may or may not be some contraband in the vehicle. We'll kinda come close and show you really what an officer might be looking for as they're approaching a vehicle. If they're getting some indication that there's some shadiness going on or something just isn't quite right, we certainly have our K9 officers that can come for backup. So we have Officer Sean Fritsch is pulling up his squad right now behind mine, it's just right outside this door. And he'll offer up a very brief demonstration on how he works with his K9 and how those dogs can detect the odor of illegal-
Now, does their car still have the button that releases the door to let the dog out to help him?
Yes.
Still, through the radio?
Yep. So, really, as an officer's walking up, especially at this time of night, they're likely going to be kinda taking a peek in the car. They're gonna come up and make contact with the occupant, they might be looking around while they're asking for a driver's license. And if you were to come over here, you could see, you know, there's, if you were just peeking the windows here, there's a couple of items in here that an officer might find concerning.
Yeah.
There's a scale, we might notice the butt of this gun right here, a little baggie that might commonly be used for marijuana.
An elastic band?
Elastic band, there's a grinder on the floor over there. So there's a few things that the officer might be thinking isn't quite right.
Yeah.
So luckily, we do have four K9 assisted officers with the Wausau Police Department. So in this scenario, we'll say that I called for Officer Fritsch to come respond. And he's gonna kinda come out and do his thing here. I'll give him his flashlight back. Oh, there you are. There's nobody in there right now. Do you want the windows up? Yep. He's gonna ask the driver to put the windows up before he walks his dog around. Then I'll let him explain really what he does at that point with his K9. So this is K9's aunt though, he's five years old. We've been partners for the last about two and a half years. He is from Germany, all of his commands are in German. He sniffs for drugs, he does officer protection, and he does tracking. I'm just gonna do a quick demonstration, I'm gonna bring him around this car, show you what he does on a daily basis.
What did you get to? What vocalization does he do when he's alerting?
When he's alerting, I'll show you. He actually, no vocalization whatsoever. He's a passive alert dog, so he doesn't do any vocals, he'll just, he'll end up in a sit. There we go. Yep. Good boy. So, one of the things, when he came around this side of the car, we were going along the side of the car, he had a head jerk back. That tells me that he hit that odor. And then, as you can see now, he's pointing his nose up at it, wagging his tail, and that's his final alert. Good boy, and then he gets his reward. Good boy. Must have it towards the driver's side, Todd?
Um, I have some methamphetamine is behind the driver's seat and then there's some marijuana in the passenger door.
He's trained to get as close to the source as he can, so when we go around the car, he's smelling that odor where it's coming out of the seams. And wherever that strongest odor is coming from, that's where he goes into his final alert.
So all his commands are in German, what if he put a word? Has he got English commands now?
Oh yeah, he's learned his English, he knew his Dutch too, so. He got trained in the German language when he went to the kennel down in Indiana. They pretty much speak to all the dogs in Dutch, so he knows his Dutch. And then, when he comes to me, he learned "treat" real quick. But we trained for six weeks down in Indiana and then we do maintenance training every month, we do 16 hours every month.
Does he have a vest?
Yes, he does.
He does have them?
Yep.
Have them?
Yes, they do.
What's his toy?
Uh, it's a Kong. So he, his bite strength is so hard that he pops tennis balls as soon as he gets them, so I had to go away from the tennis ball because they're impossible to get away from them once he pops them. So we go with a Kong and he probably goes through a Kong every three, four months where he chews the top off of it and then he doesn't wanna give it up. He stays at home with me, I have a kennel that's outfit for a two-dog run. That way I can have him outside and also babysit one of the other K9s, because we only babysit each other's dogs, they don't go to a regular kennel. No, we watch each other's dogs because we know the commands and we know how to handle the dogs. So, we average, well, we've been at this for two and a half years, the first two years we averaged about 130 deployments in a year. That's just with one dog. I do not have kids. He's very social. He doesn't like to be pet a whole lot, but he is very social, like I can walk him through the group and I have no hesitations. Yeah.
So does he live with his family?
Yep. Yep, Xander, he has a family too, so.
And he gets along well with the kids and everything?
And I had him out on the 400 block for our community day and people were coming up and petting him and we did some demonstrations and he did completely fine. He's in protective mode right now, you can see he's trying to protect me.
So Sean, you were, you spent time in the drug unit at the county? And obviously, your dog is trained to detect drugs. How integral, however, do you see your role as a K9 assisted officer in helping patrol with traffic stops like this or just helping really with the, kinda the overarching drug problem?
He's definitely a very powerful tool when it comes to drug detection. When I pull up on a traffic stop, if that officer doesn't have probable cause to get into that car, he can make that probable cause just by doing a sniffer on the car and alerting. So he gets us into a lot of cars. That we otherwise wouldn't.
Wouldn't, yeah.
How quick does he react to just around ordinary residents?
Say that again?
How does he react to walking around on ordinary residents?
Like at home and stuff like that? He has a completely different attitude around my house than he does at work. So he's definitely got a split personality. At home, he just wants to lay down, chew on his Kong, and he's good. He doesn't wanna do anything else, but once I put on my uniform, he knows it's time to go to work and he's got a completely different attitude. Probably heard him in the back of my car when I got out, bark, 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 bark. He's ready to go to work, so, and that's what he wants to do.
Have you ever been in a position where he's had to defend you?
No, not yet. He's been a deterrent several times, where people have gotten out of their car and wanted to come back and approach me and as soon as they heard him, they sat back down in their car. We've had a couple of successful tracks. We assisted the county on a track. Two guys fled from a vehicle that was involved in a high-speed chase from Anago to northern Marathon County. They got the driver, he had a gun in his pocket. We went and tracked the passenger. He had run across a muddy farm field, rolled himself up in mud, and he actually found the guy.
Typical deployment, another officer at the same time stops somebody.
Yep. Yep. Yep, there's a couple different ways we can do it now. Is, I can self-initiate, I can go to that traffic stop without even being asked and just run my dog. And that's something I typically like to do because when officers call me to a stop, they probably have some reasonable suspicion. I don't want them just going around cars that I suspect have drugs in them because they'll get in the habit of, as soon as he gets up to the car, sitting down on it, I wanna bring them around cars that I don't suspect as well. But then, officers can call me to that stop. Or if they have reasonable suspicion, they can detain that car for a while and then call me to that stop. So they have a reason to hold that car for a little bit.
Sean, are you still doing locker sniffs at the schools as well?
Yep, on our training days during the school year, we'll rotate between the schools and we'll do locker and parking lot sniffs at all the schools.
While they're in session?
While they're in session, yep. They'll go into a lockdown and we'll do, we'll bring dogs in.
Is this unannounced or is it just a report with cause?
Um, no, it's, they're set up ahead of time, students don't know about it.
But the staff does?
The staff does, I think, that day or a few days prior. But then they go into a lockdown when we arrive and we walk our dogs in.
I can tell you, when I was a school resource officer at East High School, it was really a great tool for us to bring in the K9s, to work with administration. Because I know in working close with the administrators, they want the school to be absolutely safe. We recognize that these kids are dealing with a lot of issues in their homes and the neighborhoods and things like that, that are really outside of the control of the school. So when they come there, they want to at least offer up for all of the kids this safe environment. That's just one tool, one of the many tools, but really an effective tool when I was an SRO, was requesting the dogs come in.
Some of the other things too, I know you saw some of the equipment that patrol officers carry. In addition to that, I also carry a monitor on my belt. It allows me to monitor the temperature inside the car and then also a button that will pop the door if I ever need him in an emergency. So we have that capability. Our squad cars are equipped with a kennel in the back, an all-metal kennel with a rubber pad on the bottom. And there's a K9 system in place that monitors the temperature inside the car. If it goes over a preset temperature, the windows roll down, there's a fan that turns on. So, and then it also alerts me on my belt that that's happening.
So you do not transport any prisoners?
No, I do not transport any prisoners at this point. Not a problem. Alright, ready, go.